All right, good evening. I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order of April 26th. If you could please rise for the invocation by Pastor Todd Thomas from the Sebastian Christian Church.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to be in leadership, Father of a beautiful community. Lord, I know that tonight, there's a lot on the docket. I know that there's a lot of business that has to happen. So, Father, I just want to lift up City Council to you right now. I ask that with the mayor and with the other council members, Father, that you will give them wisdom and that you'll give them discernment as they do their best to lead this community, as they, Father, strive to continue to have such a beautiful community, Father. We are so very grateful to you, above all, for all that you bestow upon us, for all that you do for us. And so, Heavenly Father, I just ask for your blessing over this meeting tonight. May we walk with wisdom and discernment. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
Counsel, any agenda modifications? Mr. Melvin.
Good to see you.
You too, sir.
Oh, this is Vern Melvin. He's probably one of my mentors in life. He used to be in charge of the Department of Children and Families, and he mentored me into the position. So, this is a proclamation, because he wasn't too happy in retirement, so he came back out of retirement to lead the Guardian Ad-Litem Program, which advocates on behalf of abused and neglected children that are involved in the foster care system. So, this is a proclamation for Guardian Ad-Litem Month, which is April. Whereas the city of Sebastian prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas the Guardian Ad-Litem Program speaks for the best interests of abused, abandoned, and neglected children who are involved in the court system, and whereas more than 190 children in the community suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year, and whereas Sebastian community members are encouraged to join together throughout the month of April to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse, neglect, and abandonment, and whereas this effort will give abused, neglected, and abandoned children in our community an improved chance for a safe, permanent home and positive future. Now therefore, I, Bob McPartlin, Mayor of the city of Sebastian, to hereby proclaim April 2017 as Guardian Ad-Litem Month in the city of Sebastian, and urge all citizens to give of their time to make a difference in the lives of our most vulnerable children by volunteering with the Guardian Ad-Litem Program.
It does. Let me spin around for you.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good. Mr. Mayor, council members, I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Guardian Ad-Litem Program, but also, more importantly, on behalf of the citizens from this community and this county who have stepped forward to advocate and to take care of their own essentially. As the mayor said in the proclamation, we have about 190 children who've been abused, abandoned, or neglected through no fault of their own, under court supervision. That's the not-so-good news. The good news is, we have approximately 100 volunteers from this community and this county who, as I said before, stepped forward to be an advocate for these children. It's a good example of a community taking care of its own, and I want to thank you again on behalf of the program, the citizens, and those children for this proclamation.
Come on, John. Got your crew with you?
There's two of us.
Oh, all right.
Three of us.
All right. These are all the guys that come to my house at least once a week, right? Is that it? All right. These are the police volunteers. These guys do a fantastic job throughout the city. They donate the equivalent of about eight full-time officers with the hours that they volunteer and give each and every year to our community. They're out there directing traffic. They're out there at volunteer events. They just help coordinate a lot of the activity and assist the city in so many ways. So, this is a proclamation for National Volunteer Week, which is April 23rd through the 29th. Whereas throughout our history, our nation has been profoundly shaped by ordinary Americans who have volunteered their time and energy to help their fellow man, and we have always been at our best when people come together to realize a common vision. And whereas here in our beautiful city of Sebastian, people come together daily to give of their time, effort, and compassion to make this a better place and create a better life for others. And whereas the city of Sebastian has always been rich in volunteerism, and its volunteers give their time daily to bring food and comfort to those older and in need. They keep our city safe and secure and operating during times of economic downturn. They help to build homes for the poor. They mentor children and teach them to read. They walk to support causes and endlessly give of their time to bring smiles to the faces of others. And whereas volunteer service is a lifelong pursuit that strengthens all of us, and with every act, our lives are made richer, our communities are drawn closer, and our country is forged stronger by the dedication and generous spirit of volunteers. And whereas today, along with our gratitude to the many volunteers in our community who give unselfishly of their time, we also want to pay tribute to our city hall and police department volunteers who have contributed thousands of hours of their time to make our city operate smoothly and to keep citizens safe from harm. We are all richer for their presence. Now therefore, I, Bob McPartlin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, to hereby proclaim April 23rd through the 29th as National Volunteer Week, and urge everyone to observe this week by volunteering and pledging to make service a part of our daily lives and to express our gratitude to those who give every day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate this. It's our pleasure to volunteer with the city. I personally have been almost 15 years, and it's been a pleasure and a real good feeling volunteering. The chief of our department is wonderful. Previous chief was the same way, and like I say, it's been a pleasure on our part, and I think I can speak for the rest of our volunteer group. I thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. You're going to give us a presentation, right? You need this one or you want that one?
No, I'll take this one. It's fine, sir. Is there anybody here from Parks and Rec?
Nobody here. Here we go.
Get in the same line. Get in the same line. Look out there, people. Give them a wave. Give them a wave. Wave to them. There you go. My name is Wayne Snow. I'm vice president of Sebastian Youth Football and Cheerleader. Hi, pal. We're here tonight to give a thank you to Parks and Rec. This is one of the groups that we have every Wednesday, practice. We have games on Saturday. They all come out, put their time in, just like any other football player, and they turn around and they do a great job. Along with that, Parks and Rec always seem to be around when I need them, the guys at the fields, and city people behind me. But it's a great, great, great thing that we do here with these guys, and I'd like to present. Ms. Hernandez here with a plaque saying thank you to the Parks and Rec. We'd like to thank the city of Sebastian as well as Park and Recreation Board for their support and generosity.
All right. Leads us up to brief announcements. May 6th, the Craft Club will have a show in Riverview Park from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. Any other council announcements?
Yes.
Yes.
For those of you who didn't have the opportunity to go, this past Saturday, we had the Natural Earth Day, and it was phenomenal. Put it on your calendar next year in April, usually right around Earth Day, which happened to fall on the 22nd this year, last Saturday. It's a wonderful event. We had more vendors than ever. Thank you, Natural Resources Board, and all the city employees who helped make it really, really, really successful.
All right. Thank you. Any other brief announcements? All right, I'll recess the city council meeting and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. So, I'll call this meeting to order. Need a roll call for that, Ms. Williams?
Just briefly, Chairman McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Coy.
Here.
Mr. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Kitchen.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Leads us up to item 7B, approval of minutes from the March 22nd CRA meeting.
Move to approve.
All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen.
Yes.
And Chairman McPartlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That leads up to item 7C, approve the revised facade, sign, and landscape grant application. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. This request has to do with construction of dumpster enclosures in our CRA, and I'll turn it over to Dory to make the final presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners, Council. This is in regards to Waste Management approaching us. Within the last six months, I believe they had come and done a presentation to City Council that they had created, because of the request of the city, a commercial recycling program where the commercial businesses in our corridors, commercial corridors, would also be able to have some sort of access to commercial recycling. What they contacted us, because what they were getting back from the business community is that either their dumpster enclosures weren't large enough for another recycle bin or that they were going to have to expend some funds to screen and enclose those dumpsters, and they didn't want to, at this time, put out the cost. So, Waste Management approached us to see if we could possibly change our codes to allow to not have those dumpsters be enclosed. We felt that that was a visual aspect that we would like to keep in our city, to enclose those dumpster and the recyclable areas, but we thought maybe this was a way that we could at least offset some of those costs, at least for the CRA area, everything east of the railroad tracks and the triangle, by adding it to our facade, sign, and landscape grant. And what you have in your packet is the existing application, and with just some minor changes on page two of that application, page 10 of your packet, where we have added, under the eligible improvements, we've added an item for the enclosures, and also just made it formal in the available funding and matching requirement. It would be $1,500 is what we would, a maximum award, which would, at least if they were, as an average price of $3,000, this would possibly help them with half of that. And we're hoping that this would at least entice the businesses to continue on and entering into that recycling program.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bosworth. Any questions for staff?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of the revised FSL grant program.
Second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this application process change? Any further council discussion?
I've got a quick question. Was there a, is there a drop-dead date on the Waste Management stuff? How long does that last? There was a timeframe.
Yes, ma'am. There was. I don't have it on the tip of my tongue. I'll find out tomorrow and make sure.
Yeah, and maybe we need, you know, it'd be a shame if this, if it's going to expire. You know, I definitely want to support this, but I want to give the public, or the commercial businesses enough time.
The feedback I have from Waste Management is that there are two applicants that are kind of on the hook, that want to start this process, so I think that this would perhaps, and hopefully hurry things along. But I will check tomorrow.
And if there's a way to twist their arm to extend the contract so that we can give people enough time, this is kind of a win-win. If we're offering to pay some of the money, and, oh, by the way, I was contacted at Earth Day. A citizen asked me, what are we going to do to help encourage more businesses to do recycling? This is it. This is a help. So, if we can extend that, the time that they will allow the really good cost, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Chairman McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That passes unanimously. So, adjourn the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting and reconvene as the city council. Brings us up to our consent agenda.
Move approval.
Move item C, please.
C, isn't Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item I, please.
I, the last one?
I, yes.
Move approval of items A, B, D through, and D through H.
Second. Can you get a roll call on that consent agenda?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Kitchen, you pulled item 9C?
I did. I have some questions regarding this payroll procedure program. Is there someone here who can answer that? Mr. Griffin?
Yes, of course. As you know probably better than anyone, we have been on a paper system for payroll forever, and it was my desire to get us out of the 80s and move us forward with proper payroll processing and also check-in, check-out procedures. This is Randy Moyer, our purchasing manager, contracts administrator. I'll let Randy expound on maybe some of the questions you might have.
Yeah, part of my background, I came from an automated system with, you know, a high-tech company. And when I got here, one of the first things I was approached with senior management here, the police chief and HR, was the way, the amount of time and labor that was spent on the entire payroll, human resource process. Having the experience of doing this before, and I've also, you know, inquired and basically hired on different software companies and packages, we formed a team and we looked at, we looked for the best in class, and we looked at six different human capital management companies. All of them were world-class. There was no question about it. We went through, you know, presentations for each one of them. The main thing that we wanted to do was get the best value for the city and give the managers the time and the tools they need to do a better job. With the system we have, ADP is world-class. They're number one in the country. They wanted our business so bad, and this is honestly, I shouldn't probably even say this, but we got a Cadillac for a Chevy price. They wanted our business. They showed us, I have a demonstration of what it can do, but it's going to give our police chief, our human resource manager, public works director, the tools they need to better manage their jobs. I mean, it's 1,000 hours, almost all of which we'll get back. We're going to be managing on an exception basis instead of logging, adding, you know, manipulating, trying to load into spreadsheets, taking out the human error factor that occurs in the, you know, the payroll process. So, that's what we've done. We wanted to partner with ADP. They proved that they really do want our business, and we're not alone. ADP has had, they're in other municipalities, Satellite Beach, Maitland, they are up in Waycross, Georgia. They know what they're doing, and they're the best in the country. So, I'm asking that if we can proceed with this package, I think it's going to be great for the city. This is not a labor reduction type of software package. This software package is giving managers the tools they need to better manage their job, which in turn will give them, you know, more time to spend doing the things that everyone wants us to do. So, with that, I'm going to ask for your approval of this.
Some of my questions are, they're going to be checking in on some smartphones. Is that correct?
That is a capability. We are not buying any software or any hardware with this package. They have the ability to check in with their smartphone. We can also even put a geographical area around, so, you know, different people, like whether it be in the parks or outside of where they don't stop and have a computer terminal, they have the ability to do that, or they have the ability to call a supervisor and say, I'm here. You know, so, we didn't want to purchase software with what the equipment we have. We may even set up, if we get this, set up a kiosk, like locally here within the building, so employees that don't have that access can come in and access their records. One of the nice things about this, it saves calls to the human resources, to managers. How much, you know, how much vacation time do I have left? Can I do what days off? It's all set. There is basically a self-service for every employee to go in and see their records, whether it be that W-2s. It's a nice system. It's very similar to what, you know, Harris ran in Melbourne, where I came from, and like I said, it's a world-class system. I don't think anyone would be disappointed if we approved this.
So, each employee will be putting in their own time on a computer?
That is, all that's going to be set up by profile and rules by department. There's many different things, but it's all driven by rules, because it's going to be different, whether it be for the police department, whether it be for Public Works, the garage, whether, you know, it's all different. People who have computers can just come in every morning, and if that's what their management wants them to do, they can just sign in, and they're there. They're there, and it's a record. And one thing that's kind of nice, too, is often now, we're doing our, we're doing our payroll. At the end of two weeks, we fill out our timesheet, we hand it, and we copy it, and we circulate it, and drive it around, and get it approved at different places. This is all going to be automatic, and when you do it daily, you don't forget, oh, yeah, last Tuesday, I took four hours to do something, or, you know, it's, it's a nice system, and it gives, I said, it gives managers the tools and the time back to do what we really want them to do.
And someone will be monitoring it before it goes to?
What we will do, yeah, we have training. They have training modules, and they also, we will run, the month before we go live, we'll run a ghost payroll twice to match, to make sure. We have checkpoints throughout this whole process where if it's going to be no or go or no-go, and each checkpoint that we have. So, I'm very confident it's going to work, and I think, really, you'll be happy that we've done this. It's going to give us the time and the managers the time to do what we want them to do.
Okay, and my other question is the price, the $10,000. You said it's, they put it low so they could get their foot in the door. How long is that $10,000 going to last?
No, the price is, our price will not, first of all, the implementation is $6,100, and it's roughly about $2,000 a month. That is, we will not have, what I was talking to their manager, we will not have a price increase, not next year, because we just said until '19, and the maximum that would be is in the 1% to 3% range.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Nothing about ADP. They're the biggest in the business, and they do a great job. The request is for the $6,100 of implementation, but it looks like that they're going to go live on July the 7th.
No, that is, we know, there is checkpoints, and we're, that was just the base, the base contract. We will not go live July the 7th. We don't have the money in the budget to do that.
That's my, was my question.
Yes, no, sir.
It's not going to go live until after October?
No, what my plan is right now, either in August or September, to run the ghost payroll and go live in September or October.
So, the 2017, '18 budget will be, will be all you'll need on that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Anyone from the public wish to speak about going to the automated payroll system? All right, I remember when I started with the state, we used to do it by paper, and then when they went, they automated, everybody's like, oh, no, it's no good. So easy and simple, and supervisors review all the timesheets anyway. It's efficient and works well. So, roll call, Ms. Williams.
There's not a, I don't think there's a motion.
I don't think we have a motion.
There wasn't a motion.
You didn't have a motion?
Oh, move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Who was the second?
Me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Leads up to item 9I. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item not because I have any concerns with it, but just because I want to go ahead and for the public announce this event. This is a very, to me, very exciting event. We've been trying, I've specifically been trying for years to get some of the 5Ks moved from the riverfront out to different locations throughout Sebastian. This helps the businesses along the riverfront, so we don't have to close the road, so we can, some of the businesses along there have had some concerns with that. And it really puts this out at a great location. It's going to be a very exciting event. For those that don't know what item I is, it's the Sebastian Charter Junior High's 5K run, so they're going to have a 5K run. It's going to be out at our, at the airport on the golf course property, and it's going to be really a cool event, and so I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention that we're going to have this 5K out there. It's going to be a fundraiser for the Sebastian Charter Junior High. It's going to take place on 13 May 2017 at 6:30 a.m., and I would suggest everyone get out there. I think it's a win-win for the city because it keeps the businesses on the riverfront open, and it also brings people out to the golf course so they can check out some other locations in Sebastian. And with that, I would recommend approval of item I.
And I'll second that and just say that my question on this item is that it's on the front nine this time. I thought that's what you were going to complain about, Mr. Hill, but it's only for this time, and it looks like we have a Plan B to eventually move it to the back nine, so it won't disturb any of the golf. It's on the front nine this time because the front nine is closed. They're reseating and doing work, so it's not going to interfere with any golf.
Yeah, and the cool thing about this, I think that in the future, we'll be able to have some larger events that are run golf-type of events, and that's going to be very exciting for the future of fundraisers and these types of events in Sebastian.
Exactly.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on the Sebastian Charter Junior High 5K, the golf course? Any further council discussion?
Move approval of item I.
You seconded it.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Get me all confused now.
Yes. Who said yes?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Leads up to committee reports and appointments. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to briefly announce, counsel, that we have lots of openings, and they're on the Construction Board, the Citizens Budget Review Advisory Board, the Natural Resources Board, the Police Officer Board of Trustees Pension Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. If anyone is interested, they could give me a call at 388-8215, or go to the website, and there's some flyers at the back table with the committee application.
All right. And you have those advertisements up on Channel 25 as well, right?
Yes, and the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Real quick, Mr. Griffin and I went to an economic development forum, I think it was last week or the week, maybe it was the week before. Time is flying. And it was the guy that came here to speak to us. It's the?
Bill Fruth.
Thank you. Bill Fruth.
Fruth.
And he's been here to speak publicly. He's been three times now at the county level. His advice, as far as our economic development, has, has kind of always been the same, and it really, he hasn't wavered, and he's kind of wagging his finger at us for not taking his advice years and years ago. But his advice was that the county needs to have, oh God, hundreds of thousands of acres available shovel-ready for us to move forward. I'm not here to discuss that, I'm just sharing that information with you. That'll be, that's, that'll be coming down from the county. It was interesting, but nothing really has changed, other than we are on an upswing. That's, that's a given. So that's it for economic development.
All right, any other committee reports?
Well, I attended all of the county commission meetings this month, and two items were on the agenda pertaining to Sebastian. They approved the 512 paving project, and they also agreed to extend the waterline assessment project through the entire Collier Creek and Harbor Point subdivisions, with the exception of Mr. Dodd's house.
All right. They put the meter at his house. All right, anything else? All right, leads us up to public hearings. The first public hearing we have is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance number O-17-01, medical marijuana. Mr. Ginsburg?
Yes, sir. This is proposed ordinance O-17-01, an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, relating to medical marijuana treatment centers, amending the Land Development Code Article 22, Language and Definitions, amending Article 6, Conditional Use Criteria, amending Article 5, zoning district regulations, providing for severability, conflict, codification, and an effective date. This is the second and final public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ginsburg. Mr. Griffin, you have any input on this, or?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
I'm not a user.
All right. Not yet, but...
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of ordinance number O-17-01.
I'll second.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on the medical marijuana treatment center ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, if you could come up and state your name for the record, please?
Joe DiMatolo, living in Sebastian, 12 years. I don't have a problem with the marijuana problem. What I do have is why isn't it going to be like in a drugstore, like regular drugs? Why do we have to have a clinic to do this stuff? Because I know how it's working. Out of the states, they have a little guy that sits in a room, says, "Oh yeah, you got a headache? Here's your script." So if it's a legal thing, why don't we put it in drugstores where it belongs?
I believe it's the drugstores that don't want to carry it.
Well, I can understand that, too, but...
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the federal government classifies marijuana as a Schedule I drug, and you can't sell Schedule I drugs in a drugstore.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right. Anyone else from the public wish to speak about medical marijuana? All right, any further counsel discussion?
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, first of all, Mr. Ginsburg, it's great to see you here this evening. You look beautiful as always.
Thank you.
And I want to commend you on the hard work you put into this. You did a great job of writing this. I think it's exactly what counsel was looking for.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Could, could I just ask the city manager to give, just for the public, for those who might be listening and those in the audience, could you just give a quick summary of the, the areas that will be authorized for the clinics? Because I have gotten a couple of questions, emails, about where Sebastian is going to put the clinics. Can you just quickly summarize?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, in the, in the ordinance, it covers that. Commercial 512 district could be along there, that's conditional use. Commercial general district, that's another conditional use. Commercial riverfront would be another conditional use. And commercial waterfront, riverfront district, CWR, would be another, another area. And of course, industrial, our industrial areas.
So it's basically all the commercial and industrial areas within the city of Sebastian, and it's a conditional use. We have to approve it up here. But it's, that's a good thing. It's, it's, it's open enough, but it's tight enough that we still have control, but we are still providing service, it's a desperately needed service. So I think we're the first, aren't we, in Indian River County?
Yeah, others have, have preceded us. They have very different regulations throughout the state.
No, but in Indian River County, I think...
Darryl Beach has a, an ordinance, I don't know if they've done it on final reading yet.
Yeah.
And the county has one in the works, too.
So I, I think we've come to a nice arrangement, and, and hopefully others will. It's, it's a very contentious issue sometimes. Here in Sebastian, it has not been. It's, we've dealt with it pretty, pretty rationally and with the folks, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, leads us up to item 12, unfinished business. Approve the RFP process for the Sebastian Municipal Golf Course Restaurant Bar and Lease. Mr. Griffin, you want to give us a little background on this?
Yes, sir.
A little background?
Okay, this process really started in December of 2015. I asked Dennis and Teresa Fink to meet with Greg Gardner and myself. We had about an hour-long, hour and 15-long meeting at the, at the Golf Course Restaurant. I had informed them that I was not prepared to take to counsel the extension of their current lease, and I had asked them to please bring forth to me another lease, something that I can take to counsel, which had a reasonable expectation of passing. Didn't hear from them for a long time. Greg was given a couple instructions to remind them of this. Six months went by, they were given another instruction, and frankly, it, it looked like I was, it was the blow-off. And in November, I prepared an RFP for publication in late December, at least that was my plan. That slipped until early January, I believe it was, early January of this year. And then, of course, then the phone calls and the letters started. I introduced this in front of counsel, I believe it was on the January 25th meeting that we had. At that meeting, it was council's instructions to me to begin negotiations with Dennis and Teresa Fink. I, I started, and to show good faith, I took the RFP down from publication. I had that taken off our website, and also from the service that we use. I also published something in the newspaper that said that that RFP was canceled. And we have had four negotiating sessions. Frankly, I believe we're at an impasse. I presented Dennis and his attorney, Warren Dill, a lease about March 27th, I believe it was. On April 17th, that would have been last week, I received email notice from Dennis Fink that they would not accept that, the lease that I presented to them, and that they would be making a presentation to council. I think that we have to send a letter to Dennis and Teresa Fink notifying them that it's my recommendation that we send a letter that says basically that the lease, the current lease that they are under right now, will terminate on November 20th. That's the expiration date of the initial term of this lease, the 20-year lease. And then I think we need to move immediately to the RFP process.
Counsel, have any questions for staff concerning this item?
Not right now.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to send a letter to the current tenant, as you outlined, and to approve the RFP process going forward.
Second, for discussion.
All right. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Yes, sir, Mr. Dill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Warren Dill. I'm representing Dennis and Teresa Fink tonight and their corporation, DTF Inc. We're going to start, I would like to start with your approval, with Dennis coming up and making a slight presentation to you, and then I would follow up and conclude our presentation to you on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could interrupt real quick, as Mr. Dill will be representing the Finks in this, I would, would make a motion that we waive the time limit for Mr. Fink and allow him to make an ample presentation on behalf of the Finks.
I'll, I'll second that motion, and I think we'll let the attorney manage the time. Is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your courtesy on that matter, I appreciate that. Before Dennis comes up with your approval, Mayor, I have a handout that Dennis is going to be referring to. Some of, I think all of you have received some of this, so it will all be new to you, but some of it might be new to you. And like I said, with your approval, I'd like to hand these out to the council members, and I have some for the clerk and staff.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue, I'd kind of like to clarify something. We're not negotiating a lease here. Therefore, we're, we're talking about the motion, which is to send a letter and to do that. We're not in the process of negotiating a lease. So if the information that's being presented relates to lease terms, I don't know that that's appropriate to that. It's just, it's just a thought. I'd hate for it to sound like we're negotiating a lease. So that, it's just, it's, I guess I can call that a point of order, if I have to call it something on that.
With all due respect, I would ask that you reserve judgment on that until the presentation is made, and then I think you can decide.
Well, I, I, if, if we're going to negotiate a lease, then I'd need a motion in front of the council that says that we're going to do that, and we need to move forward with that motion. Right now, the motion is that we send a letter, and that we go out with an RFP. And I, I just, I'd hate to get in a situation where it appears as though the council is actually negotiating a lease. We have a, a staff person that does that, and if the council begins to negotiate one lease, then I will guarantee you that we'll negotiate every lease that the city gets involved in. Is that an appropriate statement, Mr. Mayor?
I, I agree with you.
Okay, so I, I think as far as the direction is concerned, that we need to not deal with input related to the contents of the lease, so that we don't get caught up into that. I, I don't want to stop the ability to talk about history and talk about that kind of stuff, but I, I really don't think we should be negotiating the contents of the lease.
No, if I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would agree with that 100%. I don't think that there's any reason for this council to be involved in, in lease negotiations. However, I do think it's, it's important that we listen and understand whether or not the current tenant is willing to continue negotiating, and whether or not we are, in fact, at an impasse. I think the question is, are we at an impasse? And if, in fact, we are, then how do we proceed? So I think the ultimate question is, are we at an impasse?
Yes, and I, I agree 100% with that.
And then if we are not, then how do you want to proceed as a council?
Yeah, I, I agree 100% with that, with that statement. And, and we can get that information without actually getting involved in it appearing as though we're negotiating a lease. So I agree with that. I just, okay.
Right, I would, I would agree with, it's at an impasse. The city requested an appraisal on the property. I guess your client doesn't agree with that appraisal, but that appraisal is for $20 a square foot. You came back with an appraisal that was $13.75 a square foot, I believe. So there's a great in, in-between there of, of what the, the place is worth per month. And I'm looking at, oh, if, you know what, and, you know, I've read your letter from the client, the one that you gave was basically the same one that's been in my packet, and they want to propose what they want to pay to stay at the Eagles' Nest. When Mr. Griffin brought this forward in January, he came forward, and what the city received in rent over the course of the previous six months, I believe, was $14,000 and change?
Something like that.
And our expenses for the same property was $13,800 and something dollars in that same thing. So basically, the city was receiving less than $1,000 on six months' rent. Is, am I in the ballpark?
How about that?
You're in the ballpark.
You are.
I'm in the ballpark. So less than $1,000 over six months is what the city received for that property. So that's why the appraisal was done, to try and see where we were at. And, and the numbers between $20 and $13.75, that's a big number to be between. And I think the only way that we can come up is, your client thinks we're at $13.75, we got an appraisal for $20. I think the only way we can establish what the fair market value is, is to put it out to bid, and let everybody put a bid in on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could, I would suggest that the, the...
Including the current tenant, yes.
The exact thing Mr. Dodd was concerned about is being discussed at this very moment. This is, this is not about whether or not we think we should get $20, or they think we should get $13. The impasse is whether or not they're willing to continue negotiating, whether the city is willing to continue negotiation. And let it be clear that when the mayor is speaking, he's speaking for himself, not the council as a whole. When he says that he believes that we are at an impasse, he's speaking for himself, not this council. So I, I would, I would reserve judgment at this time as to whether or not we are at an impasse. My belief is, you are at an impasse when both sides decide they're not willing to negotiate, or one side is not willing to negotiate. I don't think we're there yet, but I would certainly like to hear from the public, and from Mr. Dill, and the Finks, as to whether or not we are, rather than just slinging judgment at this early moment.
Well, you are correct. I said, I believe we're at an impasse. I think Mr. Dodd said he believed they, he was at an impasse. I never said the council or implied the council. These are my own feelings, and even when Mr. Griffin brought this to my attention, probably back in December 2015. And I think, I believe, the city has complied with their balance of the 20-year lease, which is in the original paperwork. We have complied with the 20-year lease. Because when he brought it to my attention about what we were saying, I'm like, what? But we abided by our lease agreement, the 20-year lease agreement. And then there were, the ability for two 10-year renewals, but that's up to this council to decide that.
What I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, if we can, is that we go forward, but that we make sure that the people who are presenting to us understand that we're not going to negotiate the lease, so please don't try to ask us to do that. Make, make, present information related to the process and the client and so forth, but don't try to ask us to negotiate the lease.
Well, I'd, I'd like to clarify information, too. I think it's really important that we be fair to, to all sides here. We have to hear their side, and then ask questions. And the public, we have a lot of folks here, they need to hear our side, because there's a lot of stories out there. I think we need to condense it down, get the facts out, and then make a decision on are we at an impasse? And we can't do that without hearing. So I think to hear the presentation, and to be able to question, and, and that's step one, and, and then listen to some of the public comments. Perhaps if we can condense it down, we'd be here till midnight if we listened, if everybody wanted to speak. But there are a lot of folks here, and we need to cover it. So I would suggest that we continue with the presentation, be allowed to ask questions, clarify information, because there's, I've, I've been getting emails from different people with questions. I have questions that I want to clarify on that side, and I have questions I want to clarify over here in public, not just on the telephone. That's my suggestion, sir.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Dill.
May we proceed?
Sure.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'd like Dennis to come up and give a presentation to you.
I want to thank the city council for allowing us to speak and present our position, and also for all the community support that we've received. I just want to talk a little bit about the history when we first started. Hopefully, I can answer some of the questions that were just brought up. In 1990, we won the bid to operate the food and beverage concession for Sebastian Municipal Golf Course. It should be noted that the first time we went out to bid, no one responded. Right from the beginning, we made improvements, expanded the bar in the kitchen area, we added equipments, and even added a private phone system on a nightcase, so the golfers could call in their orders, and it would speed up play. The present lease is an extension of that bid. It was signed in 1997, which included a major expansion of the facilities financed by us, and the work was completed in the fall of 1998. After the expansion, and throughout the years, we continued to make improvements. We had a 20-by-45-foot patio and planted surrounding shrubs. We remodeled a number of times, including an extensive one about three or four years ago. We want to renew the lease, and we've been saying this since 2015, even during a meeting with Mr. Griffin and, and Greg. He knows that we wanted to do this. We've, we've remodeled a number of times, oh, I said that. We want to renew the lease, and it's our, and as is, as is our option with your approval, and amend our present lease as necessary. We have a letter from the former city manager regarding the intent of the renewal options. And I, in that packet that we gave you, I, you'll find the letter. And I'll just read two of the paragraphs. And then one says, "Because of the cost of the expansion, DTF had originally requested a lease for a period of 40 years. However, due to a restriction on airport leases, an agreement or lease was limited to a period of 20 years. Given the size of the undertaking and potential financial burden by Dennis and Teresa Fink on behalf of their corporation, DTF, as well as the benefit to the golf course and the city, it was agreed that in addition to the 20-year lease term, the city would provide an option that would allow the concessionaire to request two additional 10-year terms. While approval of such requests we had to sole discretion of the city, it was anticipated that extension of the concession lease would be granted by the city because the city would have initially granted a 40-year lease if it had been possible." That's what was told to me at that time and that's what I'm going by. I mean, that's what we went by back then. In the next area, the comparison to other restaurants. And this is important, this is what, the mayor brought this out, and I understand his concern. But we shouldn't be compared to other restaurants. We should be compared to other golf course food and beverage operations. That's what the RFP was for in the first place. Closings or loss of play due to weather conditions are prevalent in, in this industry. We require to be open daily and at specific times when the golf course is open, whether it's profitable or not. On many Mondays, for instance, we have sales as low as $200 or $300 a day, especially in the summertime. Even the booking of wedding and banquets are restrictive. It's subject to the golf course operation. You know, we can't book weddings because if you, you know, you usually book a wedding six months in advance and then if you, all of a sudden, two months, they want to have a golf tournament, we can't tell the people that you can't have a wedding because now we have a golf tournament. So we really don't book that many. Hardly any. We accept and understand this, though, but it needs to be reflected in the rental costs. As I pointed out, the lease proposed by the city manager amplifies the difference and a rental factor is just, in my opinion, unworkable. On the lease concerns, and this is one of the reasons that we're, I guess, according to the city manager, at an impasse. Because I can't sign this lease. I don't think anybody would. I'm sure you have a copy of that lease, but I just have a few things that I pointed out in the beginning. Section 2.01, the lesser may add or delete by addendum to the agreement additional sites at its sole discretion. Not really sure what that means, but I know we had the restaurant bar, the patio, and the storage building. So I don't know if that means you can add or delete them at the city's discretion. It also says, "Nothing contained in a concession lease shall preclude the lesser from charging fees for, including but not limited to parking, admission, and special events." Seems a little confusing to me. Section 3.05, Sections B and F and C and D requires a point-of-sale system that must be approved by the city. Well, I have a system that costs $10,000. Now, if the city tells me, well, we don't like that one, we want you to use that one, what am I supposed to do? I have to get rid of that. I, you know, I can't accept that. And also, you know, there's technological advancements all the time. What happens if you want to switch? You should be able to do that. I don't think, if I was going to lease out a space in the US1 as a restaurant, they're going to tell me what kind of POS system I should use. It also says in this lease that they require submitting a percentage of sales record. Submitting a sales record, but why, why ask for sales if the lease is not based on a percent of sales? That's what I couldn't figure out. We offered to pay a percentage at the meeting that we were at an impasse because I said the $57,600 was just way too much money. And we offered to give a percentage of sales, the 5 percent that he asked for in the RFP. And he said the, the city was not interested in speculation. I don't understand how, two months ago, you could put out an RFP for, and say, you know, what rent you were going to pay and then you had to start at 5 percent for, to pay a percentage of sales, and now he's not interested in that. Just doesn't make sense to me. Section 4.04, advertisement. Again, I'm trying to compare us as a golf course operation compared to a restaurant in the city. And that advertising, it says, "All advertising on and off-site must be approved by the director of golf and require approval by the Sebastian Community Development Department." I just can't see how that could work. And again, I'm sure no one else, if I was going to lease a place on wherever else, they're going to tell me that I have to do all these things. The rent, the whole structure is different. Sections 4.02 and 4.03, the lesser agrees that it will obtain prior written approval from the lesser for originally approved specifications, signage, graphics, equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But then it says, "The lesser reserves the right to require the lesser to change any items they previously approved." So you get permission to do something and then the city can come back and tell you to take it down? So I could put up a sign and then they're going to tell me I have to take it down? Maybe the next city manager comes in and says, "Well, we don't like that sign anymore." Again, that's something that I don't under, understand on this lease. The best one is a termination by the lesser. The lesser should have the right to terminate the concession lease without cause on 90 days prior written notice. Again, that's not normal in restaurant tenant leases or any leases for that matter. It's not even a lease. You have 90 days to say without cause, you could terminate this agreement. Now, I agreed to pay $35,000 to make more improvements to here. And then you're going to say, "Okay, we don't want you here anymore." I just, that's something I can't do. And that's the reason I couldn't sign that lease besides the, the high cost that he wanted. We have offered a rent that is considerably higher than Fairwinds or Sandridge Golf Courses. But we believe by working together with Sebastian, we could succeed. That's one of the reasons I included the rent based on percentage of sales. Together, we could promote golf tournaments, hold special in-house tournaments, promote leagues and other golf and grub specials. This would be in addition to our daily and weekly specials that we advertise for all. And I think you should look at this as a service, just like the golf club maintenance or the golf club management company provides a service. We had a, before Greg took over, we had Pat Surjean running the golf course. And the city didn't pay him a salary, but he got the pro shop and I think part of the driving range, et cetera, et cetera. But it's almost the same type of thing. Us, it's a little bit different. The city, we pay the city, but we get a lot of the profits. So, you know. I don't want to lose my place. Anyways, the same principle. A concession was originally put out for bid because the golf course was losing money in the food and beverage operation. It has never lost money since we took over. In addition, we received an extremely valuable asset, the 2,200-square-foot clubhouse expansion we, that we financed. And I know you got a financial sheet from the city manager. And I made one up myself. What he gave you at that meeting was a seven-year synopsis of what was going on. In the beginning of the meeting, he's, he just took our base rent. Our base rent was, I think, $1,300. But he forgot to mention the, the percentage that we pay for beer, wine, and liquor. It was also the time of year when that percentage is a lot lower because it was the slow time of the year. I just took the 12 months. And our base rent and alcohol percentage rent was $28,387. The expenses, and I, I based it on his seven-month average, $2,000 for building maintenance, $14-something for electric, and then the order expense, and that came to $20,000. So it's not a lot, but the city still made $8,000. They're not losing money, and that's after the expenses are paid. And we went and built a clubhouse building for the city that I'm sure helped pay for a lot of things that were going on. And, and now 20 years later, when we, we understand that we have to pay more when it, you know, and we're willing to do that. And we'll get to that. Well, we can't negotiate, so I'm trying to fit this into the, what we're doing. But that's about the revenues and expenses. I don't do this a lot. I want to get into the revenue, and this is, it's not just rent, it's our costs, and I want to do some comparisons. And the city manager's proposal with the rent and the utilities that I would have to pay, that we would have to pay, would be $80,000 a year. We're presently paying with the property tax and, and the utilities are included, $33,500. We're proposing, after we pay the utilities, we'd be paying $58,400. The city manager wants us to pay 40.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I think we're starting to delve a little bit into contract negotiations. And I think that, that the point needs to be whether or not you're willing to negotiate further with the city of Sebastian. I think that's, that's the question that, that we're being asked. So, so getting into the, to the minutia and the numbers is not exactly where we need to be.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
I, I think we just need to be clear, Dennis, that, that our decision is going to be based on whether or not you're willing to go forward and continue to negotiate and whether the city's willing to continue to negotiate. That's the question that's on the table.
Well, yes, I definitely, we, we want to go forward, we're just, the, the problem being is, how do we do that?
Right, understood. And, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, we have received, the city manager, I think last week, received your latest proposal to him. So, so I believe that everyone has that. So the, so going further, further in discussing it, I think the, the question is, now that we have gotten that latest proposal, is the city of Sebastian willing to continue the negotiations process? And are you willing to continue negotiating with the city of Sebastian if we find that proposal to be unacceptable? That's the question. Are we at an impasse? An impasse means are, are one of the sides no longer willing to negotiate? At that point, we have an impasse, and at that point, we make the decision to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of the speaker? The, the information that you just, you talked about a couple minutes ago were the issues that you had with the lease that was presented by the city manager.
With what?
You, you mentioned, not only in your, in your written documentation, but also in your presentation, that there were issues that you had with the lease that was presented by the city manager, some things like point-of-sale systems and so forth. How did you convey that to the city manager when it was presented to you?
We really didn't get a time. He's, he said, "The city's offer is $57,600 and this lease had to be accepted."
Okay, was there any, how did you communicate back to him that there were pieces, there were parts of the lease document that you had issues with?
We started to, but then we sort of.
I'm sorry?
We started to, but we sort of got cut off and he said, "We are at an impasse." And I says, "No, we're not at an impasse." And that's when I mentioned, "Well, if it's the money that you're talking about, how about if we offer the 5 percent?" You know, because if people think we're making all this kind of money.
Let me kind of cut to the chase a little bit, okay? If, if the rent number is somewhere between your number and the city manager's number, okay, which is between the 13 and 16, and there are issues with the lease that you can negotiate with the city manager, are you willing to do that negotiation?
I am willing to do it. My, here's my biggest problem with this whole thing is to get him to understand that we should be. See, I, I didn't really want to do that second appraiser, that second appraisal. I don't think an appraisal of restaurants, his appraisal was on restaurants on US1, 1, the riverfront, even Vero Beach, Beachside.
Okay.
You can't compare us with another restaurant. We have to be compared to other golf courses. And that's what I've been trying to do all along.
Okay, but can you get past that and do a negotiation? Hope so, or you can?
I think we can if he would, that's what we have to do.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. Are you finished with your, with your question, Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, yes, for right now, I am.
Just so we all, just so we all understand what we're, we're talking about here, the difference is $20,000. Now, that's a lot. It's a substantial amount, but the difference is $20,000 a year. That's the difference in, in where Dennis is and where the city is. The difference is $20,000 a year. So whether or not either side is willing to budge or discuss this any further is the question that we have.
And that's exactly what I was trying to get to is, was if, Mr. Griffin, do you see an opportunity to negotiate?
One of the things that, what we did to establish price was to get, both parties got appraisals. I think I negotiated in good faith by splitting it down the middle and rounding down to their favor.
Okay.
I eliminated the ad valorem taxation that they would have to pay. I, I did not include the outside patio space in the external building, which is 1,000 square feet. All of those things I didn't do. What I did do was some of the administrative things that will tighten up a lease and put, finally, the landlord in the driver's seat, rather than the other way around, the way it's been for 20 years. So, you know, you've got $20 a square foot, which is not unreasonable. They did, yes, it wasn't a golf course, golf course, but it was restaurants in Sebastian, and you have $13.75. I think I did the reasonable thing under the circumstances.
Okay.
And it was to their advantage.
Mr. Griffin, did the original RFP that you put out have a specific dollar amount in there? Or did you leave it up to the restaurateur to fill that in?
I, it was, left it up to the restaurateur to fill it in, and he's talking about the 5 percent. It was a minimum of 5 percent, and it was an or. The restaurateur could have put the percentage in, whether it was 5 or if it was 10. 5 was the minimum.
I hate to shortcut this process, but I think what we're going to end up doing is listening to a lot of people tell us what needs to be in the lease.
Well, I have some, I have some questions for this, the, the current, I just have a few things I want to clarify, just based on what you, you said. Because there's a lot of different figures and facts floating around out there. And we've all gotten a lot of letters and telephone calls and been stopped in Walmart and had people comment, lots and lots and lots. You're a hot item. And, and some of the information is not necessarily fact. So I just want to go on some of the things that you said. Currently, the, the paper you just gave us right now says you are paying $33,500 annually?
If you include the property tax that we pay.
Are you, are you paying the property tax right now?
Yes.
Yes. So it's 28,4.
And 5,100 for the property tax.
Plus 51. Who pays the utilities?
The city does.
The city pays the utilities. Who pays for maintenance?
For.
Who pays for maintenance?
You mean building maintenance?
Yes.
They do a lot of that. We pay for all the equipment maintenance and everything. The building maintenance average.
So if you need a light bulb, who pays for that?
We normally change the light bulbs.
Were you just out there? Were you just out there to change lighting?
We changed, just yesterday, we changed light fixtures in their kitchen.
Is that a requirement of the lease, that the city does that?
It says in the lease, whereas the effect that we make those repairs, yes.
Okay.
And we pay, of course, we pay water and sewer charges.
Okay, so we pay all the maintenance, we pay the electric bill, and you pay a basic rent plus property tax. And so that's $33,500 a year, comes down to $2,792 a month. Well, you know, somebody thinks that's a lot, but for a restaurant, that might not be so, that's a pretty good deal. I think, I think you'll admit that. You have to give us that.
How much a month?
$2,792. If you divide 33,5 by 12, that's what it comes out to, 2,000. I'll redo it, but this thing didn't. That's, that's, that's a good deal. And just, just to be fair, I told you, I'm going to be fair on both sides here. You've had a good deal for 20 years. You did have a big investment initially, a big one, and you did some mega, mega, mega improvements. But as a reward for that, the city gave you a very, very, very lucrative contract. Here, you make the improvements, 20 years, you're going to get a good deal. So I hope we can agree that you've had a good deal. Do you disagree?
Can you tell me the monthly figure again?
I'm going to use your numbers, okay? I'm using your numbers, just a second. Calculator, 33,500 divided by 12 is $2,792.
Oh, okay. That's what, I thought you said $2,100 a month.
No, $2,792 for, for the golf course. Okay, I, my question to you, can, can you tell me that you, do you want to tell me you had a bad deal for 20 years, or you had a pretty good deal for 20 years?
No, I would like to say when we took it over, you could seat about 40 people in it, and those numbers wouldn't be there unless we did it, and this didn't happen until we made that expansion. My payments right then, at that time, it was 10 and 1/2% interest, and my monthly payments were 1,600 and some dollars.
Agreed, but that's, that was the deal. You put $98,000 of improvements, over the 20 years, you got a good deal.
I think it's a fair deal.
Please, to be fair to the city, don't make it sound like we're the big bad guys for the last 20 years. You did us a favor, we did you a favor. You got a good lease, you made improvements. I mean, that's fair, that's fair to say. Yeah?
Well, I think it was a fair deal for both.
Or would you rather stand there and say the city screwed you? I mean, if you want to say that, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
We've never said that. I think it was a fair deal for both sides.
Okay.
And we're willing.
Okay, no, wait, wait, okay.
Okay.
That's history, okay? That's, 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 that's the history. You, you put in the improvement, because we keep coming back to this, and by the way, I have the public telling me in emails, and they put so many improvements, and hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they've done all of this, but the bottom line is, initially, 100,000, can, do you have any more improvements that you've done over the years? Can you name some more items that materially have come out of your pocket since that mega improvement? Like, did you have to pay for the patio out back?
Yes.
Did you pay for the, you have nice canopy tent?
Yes.
Okay, so you paid for those?
Yes.
Were you charged any more rent because you can seat people outside?
It was, the reason we did that mainly was when they passed the smoking ban.
But if people want to eat out there?
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I don't smoke anymore, but I used to sit out there a lot.
We have a few people. It's not a big, it's not a big thing.
That's two years, what do you have?
I mean, we, we put in tile in the, in the dining room when they, three or four years ago, we built partitions where the bus stations are, we put a partition where the drink station was, another partition we put up.
Okay, can you throw a number at that? Because, I mean, that's, that's something I think you should know. I don't know, if I made investments, I'd want to know that kind of stuff.
I mean, you mean you're asking for a dollar figure right now?
Well, if you don't know it, I don't want you to make one up. So let's move on, we'll move.
Trying to say, we, you know, it's like a constant thing, like, in other words, we talked about maintenance, and I know it's always the same, well, if you own a restaurant, you have these costs anyway. I mean, we had talked about, I think you mentioned, Mr. Dodd, at the one meeting about your daughter has a restaurant and fixing a walk-in cooler that the city wouldn't do that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the city does not fix any of the equipment.
Did the city put a new roof on your place?
Yes, they did.
Okay, did the city, did the city, who put in the carpet?
We have, and they did the last time, but the steam, and we've agreed to take over all of that and redo the kitchen floors. Those were part of the improvements that we said we would do.
That you will do in the future, but as of right now, it's, that's not, I'm just trying to, to, to give a general, and I'm trying to verify for myself and for the people sitting here and out watching on TV, some of the things, the assumptions that have been made, because, I mean, I have heard things that you, from other people, that may not necessarily be true. Some of them are. That's my only reason right now, is asking you questions right here in public, so you can tell me, and I can get the right answer. And they're sitting here, and I can ask the city, so it's really hard to fudge information when you've got everybody in the same room talking about the issue. So I, I, I'm glad to hear that you, you, you say you did get a good deal for 20 years, and the city didn't screw you. And by the way, I love your restaurant. I love it. You notice I haven't been out there recently, and I had to kind of stay away because of what's going on, because of conflicts of interest. I didn't want to be out there. So I've missed being there. But this is also business. This is a business deal, and it's not because I, it's not friendship. This is business. So we have to lay it out in business terms. Now, it's up to the five of us to decide if, if we want to go for a proposal, or if we're going to continue the negotiations. But I think for right now, I'm going to just stop the line of questioning, because I think Mr. Hill has put it very, very well, that there's, we're at a $20,000 difference right now. And is it, I guess we have, our decision here is, are we going to go further, negotiate any further? Is it worth it?
Yeah, I think that the only question is, is are we willing to? I think the city manager stated very clearly that he's pretty much locked in, and he's not willing to go further. So I think that, that being said, it's incumbent upon us to decide whether or not we want to direct the city manager to continue the negotiations, because it's also clear that Mr. Fink is willing to continue negotiations, so.
But not on the dollar amount?
Mr. Mayor?
He didn't say on the dollar amount. He didn't say, he said he wasn't going to pay $57,000, but he didn't say he wouldn't pay more, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I have a compromise that I'd like to talk about very quickly before we go any further. I think it's apparent from the information we received that there's an interest in the city to try to allow the Finks to continue to operate that facility. I think that, in my opinion, there's an interest in the, in replacing the existing lease. There's a lot of deficiencies in that lease that need to be corrected, and I think the city manager did a good job of correcting those in his proposed lease. I do think there's some things in there that should be able to be negotiated. What I'd like to propose, if you're willing to pull your motion, is that we table this item until our first meeting in June, and that we direct the two parties to re-enter negotiations, and at the first meeting in June, if they are still at an impasse or they cannot complete negotiations, then we would direct the city manager to notify them that their lease is not going to be renewed, and we're going to go out to RFP. And I'll place that in form of a motion if you'll pull your motion.
I'm not going to pull my motion, and you know, they have met three or four times since the last meeting we've had in January. This is going back and forth. I mean, Mr. Griffin, do you think you can come back, and you're going to be happy with an agreement that you discussed with them? Do you have that sense that that's going to happen? Are we just going to come back later? I don't know if I can qualify that. Frankly, I don't think so, but if you decide to go forward in some way with this, sorry? If you decide to go forward in some way with this, I'll recuse myself from this, I'll assign somebody else to negotiate with these folks. Some, hate to throw Ken Kilgore under the bus, but I'm going to put him in there to negotiate this. He's done our contract negotiations with our, our union contracts. I trust Ken, I know the council trusts Ken, so, but I frankly think that, you know, you can argue all day about these administrative things, that I think we have to tighten up a new contract. This is a, this is a contract where citizens are involved. This isn't an industrial, an industrial contract at a hangar. This is a lease where, where citizens go in and out. We have, as government, we have a higher standard of care, and I've tried to submit a fair lease, administratively tough, that finally puts the city in the position of a real landlord. And if I have to take myself out of this process, I am certainly willing to do that and put Mr. Kilgore in there. Because I looked through their appraisal, and the only way to get a true estimate on what it is is competitive and open market, and I don't think anybody knows what that restaurant is worth. And I think there's a lot of people out here that may want to even bid on this thing, and, and I think, like you talked about, they had a really good deal, we needed them at the time for that 20, 20-year factor. And that's what it was, and I heard in the history that the thought, the assumption was we were going to get the additional 20 years. That wasn't written in there. It was a 20-year lease, and like you said, you know, the disparaging comments, I get the emails, I get the looks, I get talks, it doesn't bother me. But I know some people in the city here have been approached, that they're kicking these people out on their rear, and that is not true. In any way, shape, or form, we have abided by our lease, which is a 20-year lease, and my feeling, and I'm only one person up here, is the only way we can get what the fair market value for the property is, is to go out to bid, and everybody has the opportunity to bid on it, to include the current tenants. And I don't think that we can vote on my motion, or Ms. Coy can pull her second, and we'll go on to the next motion, but I don't think any more meetings, or even Mr. Kilgore with his great, you know, negotiation skills, is going to change anything, because there is still going to be people that think we are not getting fair market value for the property.
The other item is, we're obligated too, if, if, let's say we were all willing just to come together and go to a bottom line and say, "Yeah, we'll take you," and we give you another really good deal. You know, this is a very litigious age that we live in, and we could be sued for not putting stuff, doing stuff appropriately, or giving sweetheart deals. So we have to be really careful on what we do. I'm not sure that we can go farther with this, and I'm really disappointed in some of the things that I've been hearing and seeing.
Can we just get past a little?
No, no, da, 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 this gentleman is, will do all the talking right now for, for that side of the fence. We're not there.
May I?
All right, Mr. Dell.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Can you clear your minds for a minute? There's been a lot of discussion here tonight, and you've actually, your questions have been remarkable, and I know you're taking this extremely seriously, as you should, but I just ask you to clear your minds for a second, and let's just kind of back up a little bit here. There's a lot of relevant history here over the last 20-plus years that I think is relevant to what we're talking about. We never got past the rent. That, we're not at an impasse on the terms of the lease at all. We never got past rent. People have said that Dennis has been ripping off the city, that he's been getting these sweetheart deals. He has been complying with the lease he has. That's all he's been doing. He was not required to pay utilities or electric under the lease. You are required to do certain maintenance, which you have honored and done under the lease. That is going to be a historical document in the not-too-distant future. We're going to enter into some changes so that the city council feels it's more equitable from their standpoint, and so that my client still feels that it's equitable from his standpoint. That's all we're trying to accomplish here. Dennis has been out there since 1990 at the restaurant. The new lease took effect in 1997, 20 years ago in November, as you are aware. When that lease was entered into, it's even in the lease, there's a discussion about Dennis and Teresa making a substantial investment out there in the improvements that they were going to do, which they did, and which they are still paying for. They added 2,200 square feet to the restaurant at their expense, per the lease. They wanted a 40-year lease to start with. Nobody would enter into that kind of expenditure, which the building permit was for $125,000. They spent another $75,000 plus on furniture, desks, chairs, tables, they completely redid the bar, they added all kind of equipment in the kitchen to accommodate another 100 seats that they added to your building. Yes, did they have a good deal? I think they had a fair deal, and I think the city had a fair deal. The city now has a 3,200-square-foot restaurant that they only have paid for 1,200 square feet of. And now you want to lease it out potentially to somebody else, or my client, but you want my client to pay full rent on the property, on the 2, 2,200 square feet that he built and paid for. No one, I don't think any one of you sitting up here would have gone out and spent $300,000 by the time you include interest in this thing. And I will tell you that that mortgage is not paid off yet. He took out a 30-year mortgage on the property, and his home is collateral, because you can't put a mortgage on government property, obviously. So he's still encumbered by that mortgage regardless of what happens here tonight or in the future. But you have a beautiful restaurant now, free and clear, 3,200 square feet. I was going to say that when Dennis and Teresa undertook this adventure here by agreeing to the new construction and agreeing to subject themselves to huge debt, they expected a 40-year lease. The only reason they didn't get 40 years at the time was because they were told, due to airport restrictions, we cannot give you 40 years. If we could, we would. You have the letter from the prior city manager supporting that fact. You can't amortize that kind of expenditure in 20 years at a municipal golf course restaurant. This is not the Yellow Dog. This is a municipal golf course restaurant. The lease says that, and I think this is really the important part here, this is the important part. We have a legal contract with the city, and the city has a legal contract with us. That legal contract says as follows. Concession ear, Dennis and Teresa, shall have the option to renew the agreement for 20. Concessioneer Dennis and Teresa shall have the option to renew the agreement for two additional 10-year terms, provided, provided, it's within the sole discretion of the city, we accept that, but provided the city approves the renewal, the renewal of the lease. The lease says Dennis and Teresa, they have the option. It is their option to renew this lease. It is your right to approve the renewal.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
You left out a very important clause. It says, "Provided that the city, within its sole discretion..."
I said that.
No, I didn't hear that.
You left out the sole discretion.
I said sole discretion.
Left out sole discretion.
No, you didn't.
Yes, you left that out. So I just want to make sure that...
Yes, I said, I, okay.
No, you didn't. But that's okay.
I'm pretty sure I did. But anyway, I'll read it again. It says, "Concessioneer shall have the option to renew the agreement for two additional 10-year terms, provided the city, within its sole discretion, approves the renewal." Well, who else's discretion would it be? Can't be our discretion.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Dill?
Yes, sir.
You represent them now, right?
Yes, sir.
If you represented them in 1997, would you have...
I did.
Did you agree to that lease agreement?
I did. I did represent them. And this lease, this lease is like this lease. It was a take-it-or-leave-it approach.
Okay. Have we abided by our 20-year portion?
This was the best lease we could get out of the city at that time. And now, the city says, this is a terrible lease that the city entered into. The city attorney back then and the city manager back then thought it was a good lease. This is what happens with history. Administrations change. Attitudes change. And now look where we are. But that was, yes, I represent, I'm proud to say I represented him. We got some changes in there that were important.
All right, but we fulfill almost our 20-year portion, right?
Yes, you have.
And then the two 10-year renewables is up to the sole discretion. The tenant can request it, and it's up to the sole discretion of the council to go for with the 10-year renewables. Is that...
And we already, at a previous meeting, directed that you renegotiate. So we have said, the renewal is not an option. We sent you to the table to renegotiate, not to renew the old lease.
Well, but the option, you see, the lease, the lease that he has continues on.
Only at our discretion.
It says, it says he has the right to renew that lease.
At our sole discretion.
No, it, yes, it says at your sole discretion, but it, that does not imply that you can just pull the rug out from somebody and say, "We don't, we're going to terminate your lease." You can't renew it. We don't, that, those words, "You can renew, you have the option to renew," don't mean anything. When you're talking about the law, there's two phrases here that are important. Right to renew and right to approve. Those two phrases have to be read in parametric. They have to be read together. They have to be read together so that they both have meaning. That's what the law is. Your city attorney is here. You see this in parametric all the time in decisions, court decisions, where they're reviewing statutory construction, terms that appear different and obfuscated. The courts always say, you have to give meaning to the two terms. The only way to give meaning to these two terms is to look at the words themselves. It doesn't say, it says you have right to approve. It doesn't say you have the right to terminate the lease and do a new lease. You have a right to approve amendments to the existing lease. And we're prepared to make amendments to that lease. We're prepared to increase the rent. We're prepared to pay more money for utilities than we don't have to. All we've got to do is get past the rental amount. You, as a council, approve fees. Let me back up. This city does not charge one penny that you do not approve. They cannot. Staff cannot set fees. Staff cannot set rent. You have a resolution out there, I'm sure, and it's in your code, Code of Ordinances, it says, the building fees, or the fees to come in for site plan approval are set by resolution. That's your resolution. Staff doesn't make up those amounts. Staff can't make up the rent. That's the one issue, the one issue, that is clearly your responsibility. The rest of the lease terms, I agree. Mr. Griffin and I, and our staff, and his staff, I'm sure we can work out those terms. I mean, there's one provision in there that is absolutely terribly onerous. It says the city can cancel this 10-year lease whenever it wants, with no liability. Can you believe that? It gives us the right to do it too, but why would we cancel it? I'm sure Mr. Griffin and I can negotiate that out of there. That is, that's in another lease that he used from another jurisdiction. But that's just one egregious example. Let me, let me wrap this up for you folks, okay?
Mr. Dill, I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because now I didn't find, the lease that you're just referencing, that's on the table, is not a renewal of the last lease, which you were previously referencing. It's a renegotiated lease. It's a totally new lease, starting all over at the beginning. Yes?
No. Well, Mr. Griffin's proposal is exactly that. I'm saying...
Okay, you just referenced that proposal.
Yes, well, I picked one term...
And you said you could negotiate with him on that.
Well, I can tell you right now that your staff is not going to agree that the existing lease can be, should be amended and carried forward. I know that. I know that. So, yes, we are prepared to sit down with your staff and negotiate a new lease. All we've got to get past with your help is the rent. That's it.
Have you sat down three times already?
Yes.
Four? Four times?
I sat down three times. I don't know who sat down the first time, but I wasn't there the first time.
Right. They sat down four, you sat down for three of the four.
And at the last meeting, Mr. Griffin said we were at an impasse. We didn't say we were at an impasse. But we are, we are where we are because we can't get past your responsibility to set the rent. Once you set the rent, assuming it's a reasonable amount, and that's a, that's a tough term, reasonable, but assuming it's reasonable, I'm confident that I can work with your staff to resolve the other issues. I'm not asking you to set the rent tonight. I'm not asking you to do that. I mean, we'd be here for a while, maybe. But I'm asking you to think about it. And I'm asking you maybe to instruct your staff to be reasonable on the rent. And the $16 is not reasonable. You cannot stay in business at the Sebastian Municipal Golf Course and pay $16 per square foot a year. You can't do it.
Mr. Dill just made up my mind.
He made my mind up too. The only way to do it is to go with...
Okay, so if you want to know the truth, I don't want to cut this off, but I would like to call the question.
Well, you've got public that wants to speak, I think.
I mean, if you want to let the public speak, that's fine, but I mean, he's...
It's not let, we have to, that's a requirement.
I agree 100% with what you just said. Basically, from what I read, from what you just said, we have an obligation to notify termination on the original lease if we're going to replace it with a new lease. And I, and you said that, and I think that's the only option that we have.
You basically said that we've got to come up with what the lease amount is, and the only way that I can come up with the lease amount is for it to go out for an hour.
In the RFP. I mean, the only way to come up with a fair lease amount, and I can't imagine any one of the other four people up here, I can speak for myself, I am not going to set a lease amount, period. We could sit up here for four days, and I'm not going to set a lease amount. I'm not, we, we do not need to be negotiating contracts because we will negotiate every contract this city goes into if we do that.
Mr. Dodd, with all due respect, the way to set the correct lease amount is to compare apples to apples.
Okay.
You need to get, the city, the city needs to retain a golf course consultant that understands golf course leases.
Have you proposed that?
I'm proposing it right now.
You're proposing that to the wrong people.
Well, I would propose it to...
Did you propose that to the city manager?
No, I did not, not yet.
Okay. So, once again, you're proposing that to a group of people that doesn't need to be doing the negotiation.
During our negotiations, we did discuss what other, what airport, what airport, well, golf course consultant, we did discuss that with the staff. We didn't, we didn't recommend that the city hired one. We always felt confident that we could work it out. But in the material that Dennis submitted to the city, there are quotes in there from golf course consultants that know how much restaurants can pay when they are a part of a municipal golf course. The appraisers hired, including ours, including ours, missed the boat.
Mr. Gitter...
They did not understand that you cannot compare the Sebastian Municipal Golf Course with restaurants over on Indian River Drive, or restaurants in, it just can't be done. Those restaurants have no restrictions on use.
I mean, the one, the number that always came to my head, and I threw it out in January, I throw it around again, I think we should be getting a dollar per round of golf that's played out there.
Mr. Gitter...
You know, but if you could have a seat, and let me get some from the public, because there's a lot of people probably want to speak on it.
Thank you very...
Cut it down to two minutes, because there's a lot of people to get through. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dill. And if you can line up behind that gentleman, so I don't have to wait for you to come up in the thing, if you can state your name and where you live, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Ferraro, and I am a permanent resident of Sebastian. And I would like to submit to the council that the issue should not be totally about the amount of money that the city can get from Eagles Nest. I play at Sebastian Golf Course with a bunch of friends. We play all the time. And I hate to say this, but Sebastian Golf Course is not in great shape. The greens are always a mess, and it's always empty. There's nobody out there. But the reason we play there is because we go back to the Eagles Nest, and we have a good time. We drink, we have food, and they treat us incredibly well. We have been to other restaurants, especially during the summer, we have been to other golf courses, and during the summer, the restaurants are closed. The restaurants have limited menus. The restaurants have no staff. That's because they can't afford to do that. I have been in business a long time, along with, I'm sure, a lot of other people. If you extract a huge fee from any restaurateur who goes in there, I would state right now that you're going to have a problem. Because come June, July, and August, when nobody's in Sebastian, they're going to be losing their shirt. And they're going to cut back their hours, they're going to cut back their staff, and they're going to cut back their menu. And then where are you going to be? So what I'm saying is, a couple of extra $1,000 that you may extract from another restaurateur is actually not going to be worth it, because you're going to lose a valuable restaurant that you have now. For 20 years, they have done a fantastic job. And I know, we as a group that play there, if we had a restaurant that wasn't treating us well, we're going to go someplace else. And I submit that other people will too. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
My name's Fred Richard. I play golf there quite often. And the guys that I play golf with, I say, "You want to eat lunch here?" They said, "No way. We never eat here. We can't eat here." Not to disagree with that gentleman. And also to disagree with that gentleman, the course is in better shape every year. They did the sprinkler system, they're going to do the greens. So we get a good bang for the buck over there. And the airport's looking good, but I don't see why you're wasting all your time. The lease is going to be up in November. Put it out for bid, and you can stop all this nonsense. And then get somebody else to bid on it. Because it's not up to par. The potential's there. I mean, it's a great restaurant. They could have a lot of things going there. But the quality is not there. That's it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hello, council. My name's Greg Hepler. I live in Sebastian. I own the Pelican Diner on US 1 in Sebastian. I'm not here to take anything away from Teresa and Dennis. My understanding is, I heard about this a while ago, it was up for lease. I was under the impression that they were probably retiring due to the length of time they'd been there. With that said, I was thinking, business opportunity. Now, hearing all the numbers that you guys are putting forward, the rent is not far out of reach. That's an average rent for most people. I spend well over $5,000, $7,000 a week just in food, just to run my restaurant. Now, maybe come summertime, I might cut my staff back just a little bit, hour, two, two hours, three hours, maybe, a week. I have half my staff here right now. They can tell you, we stay busy year-round. And that's a compliment to my staff, and the community, and everything that we do. Now, you guys are forgetting, there's a liquor license involved. That's an unlimited potential of money. They're not just a golf course, they're a full-service restaurant that's open probably seven days a week, if not 360-some-odd days a year. So now you have breakfast, lunch, and dinner with a full liquor license. There is no excuse not to be making money. You can market, you can advertise. And if you maintain and retain your facility, and keep your customers happy, and treat your staff well, you have no reason not to be successful. So please, take into consideration the number of golfers that play there every day, how many golfers are there, that's potential income walking in the door, let alone the parking that you have, the advertising that they try to do or do not do, whatever it may be. But you can outreach, and there's tons of potential. So I would like to see it put out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If, no, no applause during a meeting or outburst, you know, I want to try and get through quickly so we can get everybody's input. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Sherri Shuck, and I live near the golf course, and I also play golf there two or three times a week. After listening to everything that's going on here with the council, the city manager, the attorneys, it appears clearly that you're at an impasse. So clearly, I am for putting it out to bid. They have the ability to bid on it. It's my tax dollars. I pay taxes to the city. I think it should be open to everyone to be able to bid on it.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And the history's in the history. It's over.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Gail Gangloff. I also play golf. In listening to everything today, it seems to be clear to me that as representatives of the citizens of Sebastian, that this should be put out for bid.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I'm Diane Rosinski. I live in Sebastian also, and just became a full-time resident, and play at the golf course. And I think it's good business practice to go out for bid periodically, according to the terms that we've discussed today.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Tracy Wade, and this is my first city council meeting, and it's not nearly as interesting as Parks and Recreation. But, you know, I'm listening to this, to this story. I'm a 12-year resident of Sebastian, and it seems to me that there was a lease given to this gentleman, and there was an option to renew. And it seems to me that that option to renew is being pulled away from him because we can get more money. I kind of agree with what the first gentleman said, that we have an institution in Sebastian that someone went to a mortgage. I mean, I hate to see that this man is going to be stuck with a mortgage that he can't pay and has no income against, so someone else can pay $20,000 more to the city. What will happen is either one of two things. Either the prices will go up substantially at the golf course for meals. Right now, I think it's reasonable. Got a lot of retirees in Sebastian that eat reasonably priced meals, not high-end restaurants that are pushing liquor. And I think that, yeah, I just think it's the right thing to do, to allow him to negotiate and renew, and I think the apples-to-apples argument is valid. I don't know anything about the restaurant business, but I've been to Eagles Nest, and it isn't, you know, a regular restaurant. It's very specified to a particular location. So I think comparing it to other golf courses in the area that have the same amount of business would be the right approach to take. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, if we can call the applause. All right, yes, sir.
My name is Robert Crady. I live at Collier Club, a walking distance from Eagles Nest. And the place needs a lot of improvement. The restaurant itself, I think it's terrible. It's just like another man said, I play golf there a few times a week. We don't even go in there for a beer afterwards, because it's terrible. The service is terrible. I went there a while ago for their signature prime rib. It was horrible. So I think whoever gets in there needs to bring it up a little bit, because it's not good now at all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You already know who I am, right?
If you can just say it again, just in case.
Joe DiBortolo.
All right, thank you.
I've known Teresa for 12 years. We run probably 15, 20 outings a year at that golf course. A friend of mine and myself were involved with running tournaments for North County Charter. We raised $10,000 this year for the school. Teresa is always there for us, and so is the golf course. But so help me God, if you pull this thing away from her without giving her a fair shot, none of that will happen again.
All right, thank you, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. When this all started tonight...
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. When this all started tonight, the impression I received was that there was a termination end of a lease. Now, all I've heard after that is a business decision of people investing money in a theoretical, longer term than the 20-year lease. Now, I've rented buildings, tenants have come in, they've modified the building. I don't care how they get the funding. But when the lease is over, any additions to the property becomes my property. They don't come in and take everything out and walk away. It's part of the business. Now, we're at a 20-year term here. We've got a building with a patio, et cetera. I've never been there, by the way. But it's a functioning business with possibly some poor investment decisions by the present leasing. And with this end of the, this is a, I finally figured out what this term you were using, the out for bid or proposal. Why are we just negotiating with one party? The city's benefited. Bad business decisions, that doesn't justify negotiating with one individual. We've got other peoples out there. Many restaurants are out here. And they've lost money. Some have made money. You've made a statement at the beginning. The lease is over. It's open for negotiation, which to me means Bob and I can get together and put a bid in. Everyone can put a bid in. Where is this going? I, I watched everybody talking here, how much of a hardship and the money they're going to be losing, or that they've invested. Hey, that's cost of doing business. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak after this gentleman, if you could line up and make it go a little bit quicker? Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Arons, and I live at 201 Pointe, Sienna Street, Sebastian, Florida. I frequent the golf course at least twice a week, and I've eaten many times in the Eagles Nest, and I've never had a bad meal. I've witnessed Teresa and her husband involved in several of the tournaments that they have, and worked hard to fill those slots up, so that the tournament would be profitable. I know what they just did for St. Baldry's, the children's cancer thing. I mean, they go above and beyond for the city. And I think it's a great asset to have them there. I think you should consider this. I know the golf course doesn't always make money, and you have to subsidize that. I'm not saying you should subsidize them, but I think you should give them some credibility, some leeway, because they've been there for 20 years, and they made a lot of improvements, and they're trying hard to make that business run. I also know how hard it is in the summer, because I see that. And I, I, contrary to what some of the other people say, I enjoy going in there and having a beer after I play. And the service has always been tremendous. I never have to wait more than one or two minutes before someone gives me a beer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Damien Gilliams, real estate broker, restaurateur, broker of liquor licenses. We have to take the emotions out of this. We have to look at this strictly as if your business manager is taking care of business for the taxpayers. You, as a board, have a fiduciary to the taxpayers of this community. And I know Dennis, and I know Teresa, and I eat there weekly. I got nothing against these people. They're good people. But what it's about is you have a lease. The lease has ran its course. You, at your discretion, and I have copies of everything right here in front of me, I reviewed it, you have the right to either renegotiate or put it out for bid. Either or. Properly, according to your charter, property that's owned by the city needs to go out to bid. Now, if you put it out to bid, you will find true market value. Everybody is arguing, first you got to get past the first part. And legally, you have the right, and I'm sure your attorney will advise you, you have the right to put this out to bid. And you have an obligation on behalf of the taxpayers to put it out to bid. No more backroom deals, like it's been going down on the riverfront, and I'm not going to get into that. Okay? So with that being said, we get past the fact that it's going out to bid. He could still bid on it. He may get a lower price. I reviewed the appraisals. It does not have a liquor license. The gentleman from Pelican is correct. That's a quarter million dollars. I sold two of them just recently. Went to Winn-Dixie, and went to Ball Park Liquors. They're very expensive documents. You leverage them, you license, you, you, you can get a mortgage against them. The city has a free liquor license down there that you purchased, actually, you didn't purchase, you got through an act of legislation many years ago, when Charlie Sembler was the state representative, and it was given. Now where's the rate of return on the liquor license as well? It's not in the appraisals. You have to take that into consideration. And again, if you put this all out properly, then you will find out true market value. And it may, we may find out that it's not $16 a square foot. It may be less than $13 a square foot. Dennis may get a better deal, and Teresa. We don't know that. But you have a moral obligation, a fiduciary, to put this out to the public. And if nobody else bids on it, except Dennis and Teresa, then they won fair and square. But the smoke and mirrors that I heard tonight, and negotiating here at the, you have a city manager, that's his job. And just for point of reference for next time, I noticed that Robert Rules of Order, when you have a motion on the floor and a second, and then you try to override it with a motion and a second, and you don't amend it with the first and the second, you got problems. Because the first and the second have to amend.
Damien, Damien, I asked that he pull the emotion. I did not try to override it. So that was parliamentarily correct.
Yeah. So I thought there was a little finagling going on there as well. But nonetheless, nonetheless, do the right thing for the taxpayers of this community. Triple net leases are common in the commercial real estate business. When I say triple net lease, you pay the maintenance, you pay the taxes, and you pay the insurance. Now, if I do some math real quick, electric at $1,500 a month for 20 years, and that's irrelevant right now, but I'll leave it at that. You can do the math. It, it doesn't matter anymore. We're at a junction now where you owe it to the taxpayers of this community to do it right. And no more of this stuff where we got $6 million invested down at the riverfront.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Leanne Harkins. Am I supposed to give you my address or not? I'm at Sebastian, Florida, anyway. I come up here, and I'm very confused over the ability to go out and bid if she's got the right to renew. And he's saying that you have a responsibility to the taxpayers, but the original agreement was set that they have the right to renew, and that now you guys can get a new deal, when it's supposed to be this deal, where she was supposed to be able to renew it. And now it's, is the carpet being pulled out under them. They made a 30-year investment in a 20-year lease. Obviously, they had the understanding that you guys, City of Sebastian, would then renew it. You know, and I just think it's, it speaks ill of the City of Sebastian that after 20 years, you guys are like, okay, we're done, and now you're going to look elsewhere. There's a trust factor in our leadership, that if you guys make a deal, and they made a deal, that they would be able to renew it. That also, I just wanted to state that my husband is a member, he's a pastor, and he's part of a group of pastors that get together at the Eagles Nest Restaurant. There's about 15 of them that get together every week there for a breakfast, and they are treated spectacular. You know, we are people that bring business into that area. I think Teresa and Dennis do a terrific job running the restaurant. I know some people are coming in here, but they're from other restaurants. I kind of feel like there's a reason why they're here. They want the bid. They're going to speak bad about it, and they brought people in to speak bad, because they're restaurateurs. And I don't think that's fair. I think what's fair is they're up for renewal. They should be able to renew. They have a 30-year investment that's now being taken away from them, because you guys did the 20-year plan. I think that trying to rate the restaurant as a regular restaurant instead of a golf course, I think is unfair and needs to be worked on. I'm very disappointed in our city manager, who feels that he can just go out and, and try to find these alternate appraisals. I just don't think it's fair. I think you need to renegotiate the current lease and keep other restaurants out from bidding. They have no right to bid on something that is said that they have the right to renew it. It was put in there for a purpose, for their protection of the long-term investment that they're going to be making. And it's going to be stolen from them if you guys try to go out to bid. They need to renegotiate and renegotiate fairly with proper appraisals of what that property's worth. They invested in it, and they deserve a renewal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask our city attorney just for an opinion?
Sure.
Hi, Mr. Ginsburg. Let's go back to some of Mr. Dill's comments, who I have great respect for, but I want to clarify some of
Me, too.
Some of the information that he put out, because it got a little bit lawyer-y. Let me use that term, that official term, when he was talking about right to renew, et cetera, et cetera. Are we, as the City of Sebastian, in any violation of that lease by not renew, automatically renewing? Let they request renewal, we say, no, going to put it out for bid. Are we in any way in violation of the lease by doing that?
No.
Why, sir?
Because there are two aspects to it. One is, when we reach the end of the 20 years, the tenants have the right to determine whether or not they wish to renew. The second provision is, if, if they decide they do, then it's up to the city council in its sole discretion as to whether or not that renewal goes forward. So you're, we're dealing now with our responsibilities under that provision.
That's, that's the way I understood it. So I want that to be really clear to the general public. We are not stealing it. It's, it's contract, and it's contract law. It's like when you sign a contract, when you sign a contract for a mortgage or to rent a place, at a certain amount of time, that contract is up. If you rent a home, an apartment, at the end of the, the lease, your contract is up, and you can either renew or not, and there are lots of options in there. We, just to be really clear and fair to both sides, the city is not stealing this, and the city is not unfairly kicking them out. We have, we've been negotiating this since Jan, since October. When, when did we start this?
December of 2015.
December of 2015. Okay. So, I mean, we have been dealing with this for, for, for months, and it's, and, and so this is some of the stuff. I'm glad for the comments. I really want to thank the, the lady who just came up and spoke, because we're hearing a lot of that, and not all of that information is factually correct. We are not violating the lease. We are, we are giving them the options they are entitled to under contract law. If we violated the lease, Mr. Dill would be coming after us. He's really good. He's a very good attorney. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks. I'll be brief. My name is Carl Shuck. I live in Collier Club, not far from the Eagles Nest. I agree with one of my neighbors who, who said that it's a poorly-run restaurant. And I think the best way to solve those kinds of problems is obviously to put it up for lease. Competition is, is what solves all those problems. Competition is what establishes market value. You guys on the committee have the obligation to represent, not a restaurant, but all the people who live in this community. And I think the best way to represent them is to put this up for bid. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further counsel discussion?
Yeah, I'll just be very brief. And the reason I'm going to vote no on this is because I don't believe that we are an impasse. And so I believe that with, with multiple renewals in a contract, I think that the city went in good faith, as well as the Finks went in good faith in signing that contract, with the assumption that we'd be able to go ahead and go forward with the renewal. I think it's a bad look for the city. I think it, I think it, I would question going into a contract with the city that has renewals on it going forward. But, you know, I, any, most of what was said tonight, I think, is irrelevant. I think the only issue is, are the Finks willing to negotiate? They've clearly stated they are. And so the issue becomes, is this council willing to continue negotiating? We have until June 28th. There's a city council member on the 14th. We could do it, we could decide to say, go forth and negotiate, as Mr. Dodd had stated. I'm sure he's changed his mind now from, 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 from what's been stated. But I think that's the only fair and reasonable way to go forward. The, the person who's holding the lease is, was willing to renegotiate the lease and not just go forward with an automatic renewal. And I think that that would be a good-faith gesture from the City of Sebastian to go ahead and allow them the time to negotiate in good faith. And they've, they've even stated they're willing to increase the numbers. They're willing to do whatever it takes to negotiate, not necessarily go to the number that the city manager is at. He is at an impasse. I guess the question is, are we? And I am not.
Okay. Let me ask the city attorney a question. Do we have to notify of termination in order to do an RFP on this?
I don't view it as a, as a termination exactly. A termination is when you take steps as a result of certain actions to terminate a lease. I mean, it has a term.
Okay.
And we've reached the point where the term is, is approaching, and we're deciding what we're going to do about that. The, the, LEC has decided they wish to renew, and we now are, are deciding whether or not we wish to permit the renewal to go forward.
Okay. Let me rephrase my question. The, the motion, as I understand it, that was put forward was that the city manager would send a letter to the DT, DTF Enterprises, that we were going to void the lease, and it was going to be up. I mean, not void, but we were going to terminate the lease, and their lease would be up. And that we would then go out to RFP. Is it a requirement for us to do an RFP that we send that letter? That we notify that the current lease is terminated?
No, but I think we should. I'll look at the letter. What we're saying is, we're not going to go forward with the renewal.
Right. Okay. And, and do we have a requirement to do that prior to the time that we send out an RFP?
We should. I don't think so.
I, I guess what I'm getting at is, can we use the RFP route to establish value without notifying them that we're going to terminate the current lease and, and use that as a means to determine fair market value?
No.
I hate to put you on the spot.
No, no, it's all right. Don't, don't forget, in January, we went out for, we published an RFP.
Understand that.
We were out there.
And it came, I understand. And it came to council, and what we said was negotiate.
Right.
Okay. And I think what we're saying now is, and
I mean, the, the term is in the lease itself.
Yes.
And a letter would not, you know, would, would, could verify what our intentions are.
Okay.
Clarify, but
I guess what I'm saying is, do it, if we do an RFP on the restaurant.
Yes.
Do we have to have the intent of that RFP to replace the current? I mean, so I get, here, here's the steps. If, if we don't send the letter, that means that we haven't officially notified them that we're not going to, we're not going to extend their lease or do whatever we're going to do. Do an RFP, establish fair market value, which would give us an opportunity to say to them, here's, here's the offer based on fair market value.
Oh.
And if you
I see what you're saying.
And if, and if you don't accept that, then we terminate.
That causes some other issues.
Okay.
In terms of the RFP being a fair document, and fairly, in, in us analyzing the, the responses, in my view, we shouldn't be using an RFP as a negotiating tool.
Okay. That's, that was my question.
It's a lot of work, too, to ask someone to do that. And in good faith, you want to be able to accept it as, as it is.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. It leads us up to item 12B, award construction services agreement for reconstruction of the piers docks. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Let me get situated here, if I could, please.
Actually, you want to take a 10-minute break?
Sir.
Five. All right. We'll be in recess for five minutes. All right. Welcome back for the second part. I'll reconvene this regular city council meeting to order. And we're up to item, where are we? 12B, award to construction services agreement for reconstruction of the piers and docks to Brothers Construction. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. This item is rebuilding of public fishing piers and docks. Were damaged during Hurricane Matthew. We've had a few starts and stops of this. We bid this once and then realized that we had some additional FEMA requirements that we had to comply with. So, we reissued a bid. This is a result of that bid. This is, which one, 1624? And that closed on 11 April of '17. And the low bid was from Brothers Construction, $1,141,115. Frank, do you have anything to add on this?
Not really, except that we were working with the permitting, and it appears that we're doing very well. We have Army Corps right now working with us. It appears that we'll be coming off the general permit, so they'll be taking care of that one. DEP has already identified that none of the piers, because they're all hurricane-related, will require a DEP permit under their current conditions. We have one pier that we're working on, the Main Street and the Boudreaux that we're working with, the St. John's River Waterman.
We were hoping to have tonight the clearance, the permit clearance from St. John's on the Boudreaux Pier. As you know, that was completely demolished. All that's out there right now are pilings in the sand. We did not get that from St. John's. It's going to be a letter of consent. We're hoping we can work that out in the next few days or a week or so. But, once that does happen, I would like Clarence from council to go ahead with the demolition of those pilings. We talked about this before, that there was a letter of consent from St. John's once the Boudreaux deal was done, and we did the Main Street Boat Ramp Project. That was supposed to be an observation pier, maintained as an observation pier. It's obviously been destroyed by Hurricane Matthew, and I'd like to really have a consensus from council, in addition to approval of the Brothers' contract to demo the Boudreaux, what's left of the Boudreaux Pier.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move toward construction services agreement for reconstruction of the piers docks. Brothers Construction authorized the city manager to execute the appropriate documents.
Second.
All right.
Is the cost to remove the piers in this bid?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to verify.
It is in that bid. What we did as a backup, Mr. Dodd, is we got another bid from a local contractor, so we have really two bids to demo that. We're going to take the lowest one.
Yeah.
Anyone from the public wish to speak about the piers and docks construction? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damian Gilhams. I've had the opportunity to build numerous docks in the community, and they were literally blown away through the storms. The only suggestion I'd like to make is, when the contract goes out, that an engineer reviews the plans specifically to handle the wind load and to make sure that the pilings are set in a way that if we get up to 150 mile an hour winds or a category four or five storm, that the pilings are not going to move. Everything else can move, as far as the decking and the rails can be blown out, but the pilings need to make sure that they can withstand winds of that force nature. You don't want to go back and do this over and over again. You will see that the wave action, the reason why the Army Corps of Engineers requires five feet above high waterline is to avoid knocking out the planks, the boardwalk itself. So, that's why they like to see it five feet above. If you notice the two existing piers that you have down there now, you had minimum damage because they were done, to an extent, as far as engineering and design, so that you wouldn't have this problem again. So, if you can get with your city manager and make sure that you have an engineering firm, review the plans, sign off on them to make sure it meets the wind load, and we don't have to replace these things in the future again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. Contract's great. Nothing to make a comment on that, with the exception, a gentleman just said, "I don't know if the state has a hurricane standard for the height," and I gather that that's probably going to be in the contract or verified on the plans. From a residential point, one, is there a schedule for the pier number one, two, three, four, five? Which ones being done first, and which will be done last? And we're also getting money back from FEMA on this contract. Now, I make an assumption, probably partially correct, that at the end of completion of the construction, FEMA's going to come in and approve what we've done, that it meets their standard, and then in turn, will be given a verbal of the amount of funds that we will be receiving. And that will go back into our, what is it, $5 million catastrophic fund we have, where we took the money out for the cleaning up of the branches, et cetera, et cetera. And what is the projected dollar from FEMA going back into our emergency fund? And I know it's hard to say when. I know it's not part of the contract, but it is a question of which ones will be done first? Will they meet the hurricane standard? Does the state have that standard? And what can we anticipate coming back into our treasury? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Frank, you got a timeline for him? Or you throw a sign down there saying, "This one should be done by May 1st. This one should be done by May 10th."
I think the contractor knows that we have a time limit because it's FEMA-funded. We have a time period. We have to have it done 18 months, to answer that question. Second question regarding the structural height, too. The five-foot is correct over the high mean-water table, and a lot of this through the building code. Our building official would make sure that the piers meet all the building requirements. And the last item on the funding requirement is that FEMA will reimburse us 92.5, 80% from the feds, and then 12.5 from the state.
And hopefully, don't come back in three years and ask us for that money back, right?
Actually, as soon as you approve this, I will send this to FEMA through the cap-G supplemental process.
Mr. Watanabe, are you an engineer?
Yes, I am.
Are you going to be watching over this project?
Yes, I am.
As normal. Thank you.
Because I'll be the project manager.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
James Khan, Sebastian. I just heard 18 months. Is that how long it's going to take to get the project started? Or when is the project supposed to get started, is my question?
The 18 months is from when the hurricane hit, 18 months from then. So, that's next June. We let this contract, or hopefully, it'll be approved tonight. We'll set up a notice-of proceed exchange with the pre-construction meeting. That will be next week.
Next week. And actually, the contract has 120-day construction.
20 days.
Okay. So, my question, and I'm just thinking out there, I'm a boater, and the way it is right now, it's very dangerous for people to be out there, and no room for anybody to do anything. Is there any way this board can see that, maybe for the holiday weekend, that we can have some officers out there protecting and making sure law and order's out there? Because they get very ruly out there and trying to help justify traffic as the way it is right now, because it's very dangerous and not safe for anybody to be out there.
Main Street ramp or-
Main Street ramp, yes.
Usually, we have most of our problems down at the yacht club ramp, as council members-
I'm sorry, the yacht club ramp.
Yacht club ramp. Okay. I can arrange for that. Weekends, is that it?
Well, just basically, the holiday weekend that's coming up, I mean, the people are going to be all over the place, and there's no place to do anything with. Boats pulling in and pulling out, people pulling into the ramp. Some people are great doing it, some people are not. Just some type of help, and then also maybe at the parking lot to justify who goes where and what parking lot, so we can all get in there and have a safe weekend.
Do you like the new parking lot?
No. It's better than it was before.
There you go. That's why we painted the lines.
And the other option, as I'm trying to bring it out now, is, I've been in this town since 1984. Our town has grown over and doubled in size. Our public boat ramps have not. Is there any ways or means that the city could start looking into another way of making boat ramps for our city?
Ooh.
And I know it's a doubtful factor, but it could happen. I mean, there's other things. I mean, we have the fine impoundment area. I know it's a county thing, but maybe the city and the county could work to make sure we can find some other avenues to getting another ramp. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the piers and docks? All right. We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the Boudreaux, what's left of the Boudreaux Dock, I would just like a consensus that council will permit us to go forward, once I get a permit in hand. I thought he threw that in his motion. He did, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was part of your motion, right?
That wasn't part of the motion. I don't think--
It wasn't part of the motion. Oh, I thought you said--
The motion was just to approve the contract--
Right.
Go forward with negotiations, and then--
Yeah.
I agree, yes.
You did throw in for him to take down the things--
I didn't actually say that, but he asked, and yes.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure we all agree that--
Thank you. All right, brings up item twelve C, annual review of the southern seawalls. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. A couple weeks ago, council received a letter from an attorney down in Vero Beach, concerning the seawall issue that's been ongoing since about, I think, October of 2014. As everyone knows, we had a seawall assessment that was done after we realized those issues on some of our seawalls. That assessment was done approximately three months after that, and we presented that to council in October, I believe it was, of 2015. And we've decided that we would make a annual, annual report to council of the status of the so-called southern seawalls. Frank did this about this time last year, as a matter of fact. So, I'll turn it over to Frank. He's gone out and made his inspection, and he's ready to make his report.
Again, Frank Watanabe, the city engineer, just want to highlight again, summary where we were back in May of 2015. We had an engineering company, Hoyle Tanner, do an engineering assessment. It was mainly on the south, southern canal system, about seven miles of canals. It was mainly combining the south Collier Canal, the George Street Canal, the Schuman Canal, and the Elkhem Waterway. Based on that assessment, it was completed back in August of 2015. The report identified about 2.96 percent of the seawalls as failing, in that report. I just want to highlight, overall, in the report, it shows a variety of different types of wall that we have, for seawalls. But if you want to note, mainly, the issue that jumped out was thirty-seven point five percent were actually earth berms of all the seawalls we have. Of the six hundred and two seawalls in the southern portion of the city, thirty-seven point five is no walls at all. Overall, in the assessment, we had eleven properties that showed failing conditions, as shown on here. Two on Joy Haven, four on George Street, three on Schuman, and two on Bailey Road. Schuman and Bailey Road are the same canal systems. The rankings are shown, ranking one and two are the highest shown, meaning poor and failing conditions. And basically, from twenty fif-- sorry, from 2014, 2015, 2016, currently now 2017, I've been out to all these properties, and monitored and inspected them. And basically, from last year to this year, the conditions have not changed at all, pretty much. I mean, not, these are from observations only, and I'll show you the photographs. If you take a look at the Schuman Waterway, basically, basically, these are all field observations, and there are no engineering structural tests being done. Typically, when you have to do that, you have to do more damage to the wall than the actual physical observations, and since the walls are not in that bad conditions, we just do an observation. And as you can tell, these are the ones on the Schuman Waterways. They're not in any really bad conditions. Majority of the seawalls are conditions where the toe of the seawall is actually kicking out. And used word seawalls, retaining walls, these are basically, these are like sheet piles that are going in. Typically, one-third should be buried, two-thirds should be sticking out of the water. In these situations, I believe the original seawalls were shallow, and that's why the toes are kicking out. And that's what's shown on these map, I mean, on these photographs of Schuman. The next one is actually George Street, so you can see a comparison. It took it at the exact same angle, it's the exact same location. You can see the March of 2016, and the April of 2016, same conditions. Actually, it's a lot more greener. Same boat, same plants, same wall conditions. And actually, the actual berm, earth berm, is protecting the seawall on the toe, to keep it where it's in place. All the George Street seawalls, identical for the work last year to this year, and as you can see in the photograph, same condition. Finally, the same thing with the Joy Haven, looked at both properties, same condition again. This is the actual property on 243. If you take a look, same angle, same wall. Of all the seawalls, this is the one that has the highest concern, because of the angle. But as you can see, hasn't moved much. But you can tell the difference, you know, from the, this was actually from 2014 to 2017, three years. And you can tell this difference, because there's a little banana tree, and the banana tree's grown. But the wall has to be the same, pretty much. So with that, just want to highlight again, seven miles of canal systems, eleven of them were identified in report, which was 2.96 percent. We do have an emergency plan, based on the last meeting we had. We had discussions, if a seawall does fall or fail, what's our action plan? In the overall discussions we've had in the past, there was some discussion about potentially having asbestos in the walls that we had in the northern seawalls. During that time, we've had discussions with the DEP, DEP regarding airborne asbestos. They directed me, if that happens, the best thing would be to bury the seawalls. Just go out there, bury it, let us know. They'll have a guy or a person come out and inspect it. So the action to the council, at the last meeting, was if something would happen, Public Works would go out there and bury the seawall. If it's on private property, then we'll charge the property owner at their expense. But that was the action plans, for in case it was an emergency, if a seawall did collapse. But beyond that, at this current time, based on the monitoring and what I've seen so far, no action needed.
All right, and we weren't going to replace the wall, we're going to slope them?
Correct. So I could answer any questions?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I kind of, I asked the city manager, I think, to put this on the agenda, and it was a good presentation, Frank, on that. I think the council does need to take some action, though. And the reason I say that is that, for two and a half years or so, there's been conversation about this, and I know that Frank and the city manager have had meetings and conversations with St. John's Water Management and DEP, but there's horror stories about St. John's Water Management and DEP saying yes on the phone, or in a meeting, and then when you actually apply for a permit to do something, they say, "Oh, no, you can't do that." I think the council needs to approve, just because I need a name in my own mind, I'm going to call it bury and sod. The council needs to approve the bury and sod approach, which is basically what Frank talked about doing, is bury it and put sod on the ground.
We've already done that. Haven't we already stated that?
It's never been approved. There was, I went back and looked at all the council meetings. There was a motion by Councilmember Gilmore at one time, for the city to be financially responsible for all the seawalls, and that motion failed. But there's never been official action by the council to approve the approach. What I'd like to do is to, in order to put this to bed, is to approve the approach, and I can, will make a motion in a minute to do that. And I, but I want to explain it first, because sometimes that gets confused. To approve the approach, at the same time, to direct the city manager to have an engineering specification developed that can be used for permitting purposes. And then to submit that engineering specification to St. John's, and so forth, and to get their approval in writing, that if we take that approach, that it's valid. They can pick a lot, because there are a couple lots out there, that we could literally do this to right now. They could pick a lot, and apply for a permit to do it on this particular lot. Make sure that we're not going to get caught in the middle of something, when we have a catastrophic issue to deal with. I think that right now, the staff has been moving forward under an assumption that's never been approved by the council. And there's been a lot of discussion, and the only motion that I could find anywhere was the one by, by Councilmember Gilmore, I mean, to pay for it, and that was turned down. The three people, I think the three of you were here that voted against that. So, that part of it's been put to bed. The council has made action, the council's directed the city staff that were not to pay for remediation of a broken wall on private property. But we haven't actually approved the approach. And we haven't, the city manager, or no one's actually produced an engineering document that talks about how much dirt, what's the slope, how far does it go, you know, all of the kinds of things that if you were to apply for a permit, you would expect. I mean, I wouldn't hire somebody on my property to do this without engineering specifications. So, I would think that the city can produce that, submit it, make sure it's approved, and then from that time forward, at the discretion of the city manager, once a wall is determined. Because quite frankly, they don't have to fall in the water to be to the point where we should do something about them. There may be instances where the seawall is not falling over, that it's appropriate, based on the city manager's approval and his staff, to do something about it. And so, it gives them the flexibility to have council approval on their approach, and to have it approved by the appropriate entities that do that, so.
I would, I agree a hundred percent with you. I thought, I was under the assumption that we would already, had already made that approval, so thank you for bringing that up. I would suggest, going forward, and getting the approval from St. John's for the process, not necessarily for a lot--
That's fine.
But for the entire process, so that we don't have to wait for a permit approval every single time we go forward and do it.
Yeah.
Mayor, just to highlight again, on this permitting, when we had these early discussions, there was discussion about, you know, do we need to get permitting from St. John's? To clarify that, when we do an overall, like we did the north Collier Canal, we have a large canal project, yes we do, because we're dealing with a lot larger area of conveyance on the individuals. Let's say, if we pick one property, we identify that because of this emergency situation, we want to take care of it. We have, I have an email from St. John's, from Gretchen Kelly, saying, "You, as the city responsible to maintain that waterway system, you are exempt, you can go ahead without a permit, to take care of whatever maintenance, whatever repairs needed on that wall, to convey the water system." We have that email and writing from St. John's. We don't have one from an overall comprehensive sense of a design plan, of a future canal system, like we did for the northern Collier Canal.
Does it have to fail? Do we have to deem it a complete, does it have to fall in? And then we are required to bury it, to take care of the asbestos?
It doesn't say how or what, it just says, under the St. John's list of exemptions, there's a whole bunch of exemptions, there's one under maintenance and repairs, that the city is obligated to do maintenance and repairs on waterway conveying systems, whether it's a canal, or it's a ditch, or whatever, to maintain that facilities to convey the water systems. And we are exempt, so we don't have to keep going after permits, because that makes it very cumbersome to us to maintain our canal systems.
Then the best bet would be to not do anything with St. John's, since we've already got approval, and just have council approve, going forward and--
Well, I will tell you, that you can probably talk to the city government in many cities in Florida, about using an email approval from a person in St. John's, and what happens when the final, when the, you know, the rubber hits the road, and St. John's says no. I'm concerned, my responsibility from up here, I'm concerned that we have been slightly informal with this. I know the council has been slightly informal, because we've never really approved it. And I think we should do that, certainly. I'm concerned we've been informal with it, and that there's a potential, that when we finally do do one of these, and we finally accomplish it, that we could get ourselves caught in some form of a liability issue. I would just like to get that put to rest. This is going to be a problem for the next twenty years.
Yeah, then, that being said, I can agree with that a hundred percent, but I would suggest that we just go and have a plan of attack, and have that approved, rather than consider going every single time, back and forth to St. John's.
That's, I agree with that a hundred percent. So, I'm going to place a motion on the floor, a motion that the city council approves, the bury and sod approach to repairing individual bulkhead walls that fail, the failure is at the discretion of the city manager. And that we direct the city manager to have engineering specifications developed, and that those be submitted to the appropriate federal or state agencies for approval.
Oh. Do we need to submit anything?
There's, if there's an emergency or exigent circumstances, the way I understand it, we can act, without a permit. That's fairly obvious. I think what is really valid in this discussion is, how about if we get ahead of the game, get an engineering firm in here, do what was, what the motion says, and we really have these, these documents and these engineering specs, that we can take to St. John's, and really get a review from them, and say, "This is the way to go," and give, get their stamp of approval on it, so--
But Councilmember Dodd asked to submit it to the agencies. I think we need, I would be a little more comfortable in backing off that very last line, getting the specifications out, and not submitting them. Is that, would that be?
I think, I think though, I think it's imperative that we do that, because one of the things that we're getting from the public, and several from the public are saying that, I don't think that they would approve this anyway, is some of the things. When we have had the discussion as to how we're going to do it, I've heard that, "Well, I don't believe St. John's will allow you to do that." Or, you know, that's sort of the line that they're going with, and if we have the documentation in place, then we're money. And so, it's as simple as that. And if we don't, then we know that we're going--
I might have misunderstood something that was said. Are you, are you comfortable with the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There is a question--
I'm done, I'm finished, that's okay.
I do--
I'm sorry.
I'd like to see him add, that any cost of material and labor for the regrading is charged to the property owner of the seawalls on private property.
I think that's already been decided. There's already been council action on that, back in, prior to the time you and I joined the council, what, a year and a half or so ago, there was a motion that was placed on the floor, that the city take the responsibility of paying for it, and that motion was denied. So, I think that's already been decided. It doesn't, and, you know, we really don't need to be trying to redo motions, redo prior council actions, it's already been done. So, I mean, I agree with you that that's there, but it's already been decided.
So, the council, what you're saying, because I do kind of, I remember, but not all the specific details. The council said, "No, we are not going to pay for private property." So, that's already on the books. Are we sure of that? Said the motion was denied.
But actually, I don't think--
No, no, the motion was that we would--
That was part of the emergency plan to the city manager. If they were failing, then he could take action. If it was on private property, we would go in, we would level it, we would bill the homeowner. If it was on our property, we would take care of it and do it. So, the thing you're talking about in the engineering report, I think it might have to identify, if it is on private property, that they will be billed for. If it's on our property, we will take care of it.
Yeah, the motion was put before the council, and it's in this information to hand out, was that the city--
And that was, Mr. Gilmore put forward, that we take ownership of everything.
Of everything.
Right. And it was seconded, and then it failed three to two--
Failed.
Because there was concern about ownership. We're taking ownership of something that somebody else's private property. So, it's not necessarily on the books.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Then we do, I agree with Councilmember Kitchen, we need to do that one also.
Well, can we, can we do that in a separate motion? Because I think we'll encumber, we've got two processes, we got two things here. One is the process, and one is whether we pay for it. So, can we separate those two into two motions?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So, I mean, if we vote on this motion, then someone can make a motion that we don't pay for it, if it's on private property. But it makes it cleaner, than trying to do those two things in one motion, I think.
Any more questions concerning this motion? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Yes, sir?
May please the council. My name is Paul Amos. I'm, I think, the attorney you referenced earlier, from Roswell, Swan, Tierney, Berry, Lacy, and Oliver. Mr. Blakemore Smith is our client, and we're dealing with the properties over on 243 and 237 Joy Haven Drive. One of the things, I've heard the council address several issues, and I was, I took a liberty of make, taking some, getting some aerial photographs, and if I could approach, just to pass these out, just so we can have a brief conversation. Permission?
Sure.
I've got a background in representing various different clients, and some of those in the past included drainage districts. And one of the things I would suggest you may want to take into consideration, I saw your engineering program, and saw what we've taken a look at, and there was a reference made, that, "Well, not much has changed." Your canal, at this point, is being used, is pretty much as a retention system. Canals are generally used as various types of systems. There's conveyance systems and retention systems. Right now, you have two outfalls, which are the, they're indicated on the second page. There's an outfall on the western side, where it says, "Number one discharge to the Sebastian River." There's another one on the top right-hand corner, says, "Number two discharge to the Sebastian River." Each one of those outfall structures, those are the last two photographs in the package that you have. And basically, they're fixed structures, look like, it looks like from the photographs that I have, is that when the water reaches a certain elevation, it crests over, and is allowed to be released into the Sebastian River. The third picture in your package that you have, is the St. John's River Water Management Discharge Control Structure. That's a large waterfall out structure on the Collier Canal, also known as Elkhem Canal. That's a three-gate structure, which is variable, can be adjusted to let outfall happen at different rates and velocities, based on the situation at hand. Your outfalls are controlled by St. John's River, because depending on what they're discharging from that major canal, which goes basically across the state, you're going to have some issues, as far as if your water, once it crests over your control structure, can go anywhere. In the event that the outfall structures were to have a higher discharge level, based on them opening those, them being St. John's River Water Management District, opening their gates-- their gates, if they open their gates, and if the water level in the south fork of the Sebastian River raises, rises, you're not going to be able to discharge from this. The photograph, which is the second page, shows basically all the rooftops from the development which has occurred inside of your water control system, which is your El Cam Canal. All those roofs, driveways, porches, pool decks, when it rains, those are no longer areas where water can percolate. That water has to sheet flow off and go someplace, and where it's going to go is into that canal system. And I haven't heard any reference, and maybe you have in another meeting, but I haven't heard any reference to 50- or 100-year storms. That's when your water control system is going to change from being a retention area, or a retention system for the most part, to a conveyance system. When you change your system, basically change hats on that system, and make it go from water retention, so it's just holding some stormwater runoff, or some rain runoff, to actually having to convey that water out, and it overtops your control structures, and the velocity picks up, you're going to have a different animal on your hands. And that animal's going to include erosion and scour, which have not been addressed in the documents that I've seen. However, the Indian River County has done a study, and has referred back to the FEMA flood maps, that the area surrounding this particular canal is a flood concern. Part of the reason it's a flood concern is everything that's contained within your system drains to it, and then has to evacuate through those two outfalls. Right now, we've been very fortunate, we had Hurricane Matthew, which, in the big picture, was not that wet of a storm. I don't think anyone would put that, and I refer to your engineers, they can tell you if that's a 50- or 100-year storm, but I don't believe it was. And your water velocities were not high, and your saturation rates in your backyards were not high. You had mentioned previously that you didn't want to pay for any private property, and I don't believe that you're allowed to. However, I think as an operator of a drainage and water conveyance system, I think there's a certain responsibility that comes with that operation. And I think the responsibility that comes with that operation is, in the event that you know that you have a system that is not prepared to convey high-velocity water, and you know there's going to be a scour issue and/or an erosion issue, and you know that the backyards of all of these properties are going to be inundated from more than seven to nine inches of water, which is about what they can absorb in a 24-hour period, that that ground is going to be heavy, there's going to be significant surface water flowing off it into your system, which will then have to discharge. Once it comes up to a level above the top of the seawall, or to the top of the seawall, it's going to be flowing over the top of your discharge structures. The water velocity will increase. When the water velocity increases, you've all seen fast-running water. When it runs at the surface faster, it's going to carry more sediment. It's going to have more of an erosive effect on these, I don't know that they're seawalls, they're more bulkheads, because I don't think there's any ocean access. But you're going to see a deleterious effect on this bulkhead system. There's not a situation where you would be directly paying for somebody's repairs, but in the event that you operate the system, and it causes damage to someone's property, I believe that your council will advise you that that's called an inverse condemnation. And I believe that your city council charter prevents you from doing any takings of private property via the operation of your systems, be it whatever systems they may be. In this particular case, these systems were, these bulkheads were placed by General Development Corp., but they were built back in the 1950s, prior to the development reaching the extent that it has. If you look in the second aerial photograph, you're going to see there's a very significant amount of structures that have been constructed in this area, and they're all draining into your system. At this point, that system and those bulkheads are holding back a load which they were never designed, and they were never originally constructed. So I would ask you to take into consideration, before you try to just dump sand or fill on top of a failing seawall, that that structural system you have, with the bulkheads that you have, are basically considered canal armoring. If you look into a canal system, it's not a seawall, or even technically a bulkhead, it's an armoring of a canal bank, to prevent the canal bank from either washing in, or washing along, as water goes through these conveyances. What my client wants to bring to your attention is, that in the event that the water starts to traverse this system, there's going to be a problem, especially in his backyard. And he's very concerned that the operation of the system, being the way that it's designed now, with the outfalls the way that they are, there'll be an erosive effect, there'll be a water management effect, which is going to cause his backyard, that all that soil's going to get heavier, and then it's going to want to go somewhere, because it's already been inundated. When it travels, there may be a destabilization in his backyard. And that's going to be significant, because you've got, in your photographs, on multiple different roads that were mentioned earlier, you've got a destabilization effect happening, where the toes kicking out on all of those bulkheads, and all that canal armoring is challenged. You're not going to have a problem with it during a normal water retention cycle. You're going to have a problem with it when there's a water conveyance cycle. And it's going to be a high-velocity system, and when it's going to occur is during a hurricane, or during a 100-year storm, or 50-year storm. When you see elevated water levels, when you see elevated water runoff coming off of each one of these roofs, all taken cumulatively, you're going to see a system failure. And it's not just your system that has had this happen. If you look at areas where FDOT has done construction, you'll notice under their bridges, they have riprap underneath all of their bridges, where the areas are shaded, or there's a destabilization issue. That's canal armoring, that's what it's for. The water runs through those canals, and when it does, it keeps the erosion down, so that the bridge structures don't fail. Anywhere that you've seen beach wave access, your jetty's, for instance, down at the inlet, there's a reason that you put the rock armor up on the sides, because the tides going in and out cause erosion, and will cause destabilization of any structures that are built nearby. So, we're asking you to take into consideration what we're dealing with when this becomes a conveyance system. I realize we're asking you to kind of put on a different hat, and I realize as city council members, you deal with lots of different business on a daily basis. I've heard several of those items come up tonight. Water management has gotten down to a real science, because there's a whole lot more involved here than there was back when I was a youngster, and these were drainage districts. Your water quality, your water outfall, your dissolved solids, your dissolved oxygen, those are all things that come into account with what you're discharging into the Sebastian River. I heard mentioned earlier that St. John's River had sent an email, and they'd suggested that they would do certain things. Without going into any names, I can tell you that that's happened with several very close-by drainage districts, where they've relied on things, and then when they went to go actually use them, there was a change in management, there was a change in personnel, and all of a sudden, memories got short. In this particular case, I think it would be very prudent to rely on your engineers, and potentially have your engineer consult with a hydrologic engineer that deals with the conveyance of water, especially potentially high-speed water. In this event, you're dealing with water going in several different directions. It's coming in from both sides, and it's being conveyed out. These seawalls are not, they're no longer viable to hold surface-flow water, hold the land back, while there's a surface-flow water issue coming in from each and every one of these developed lots. These seawalls are also not viable to armor the walls of your canal. When you convey water down, and it is your canal, the seawalls may belong to the landowners, and the land may be.
Beg your pardon, sir.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, we are under public input on an item that's on the agenda, and this has clearly gone beyond five minutes. It's acceptable for him to continue, but I believe it would have to be at the approval of council. So I would just request that we stay consistent in maintaining our five-minute time limit.
I understand, Mr. Hill, and it was one of those things, I saw Mr. Dill speaking earlier, and I may have gotten a bit long-winded, and if I do, I will definitely, I'll defer to the council. I'm not here to, this wasn't meant to be a threatening situation, it was meant to be more possibly educational, because my background is significant in the drainage district and the water conveyance field, and I wanted to touch base with you about some issues that you may or may not have taken into consideration. And I think the operation of your system may not be something that people think about. It's, you know, a lot of people, they look at a canal, or they say, oh, look, it's a ditch, or, oh, look, it's a small canal.
I'd like to ask him some, a couple of questions about what he has said, though, if you don't mind.
Well, we're kind of getting off the beaten path here, and it's coming up on nine o'clock, and we've got several items that still have to be approved.
All right, I'll be really quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Tropical Storm Fay, 2007, I think that was a 50-year, it might even have been a 100-year event. And every place in Sebastian survived, everywhere. No one was flooded out. And we based our water management plan on the areas that flooded up from that particular day. And, believe it or not, a lot of us up here, and Mr. Watanabe, we deal with water issues a lot, a lot, more than, more than you know. So, and oh, by the way, Francis and Jean were two back-to-back hurricanes that we survived in 2004. We have spent millions of dollars in water management, and that guy right down there is really, really good. And we've spent a lot of time up here talking about it. So, I, I've watched the process happen. I've been sitting up here 13 years, so I've watched over time us do things to make it better. And I am very confident in our system, and I like how our process has evolved. So though I appreciate your concerns, know equally that if the swell in my, or if the ditch in my backyard during another Tropical Storm Fay event floods and damages my property, it then in turn becomes a conveyance ditch. But guess what? It's an act of God. And the city's not going to pay for the erosion of my fence, or because the ditch failed. We are taking all of that into consideration. So, we got it.
Vice Mayor Coy, I understand that that's your perception, and I'm not here to argue with anybody on the board. I would just suggest that, under the current law in Florida, inverse condemnation might see it differently. If there's operation of any system by any government alimony.
The attorney will take care of that.
That's fine. Well, I suggest, I guess my response to that would be the council's.
That's okay.
Consciousness can be the guide.
We'll throw that right to our attorney. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the annual review of the southern seawalls?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damian Gilliam. We have spoken about this many a times before. The precedent has been set. You've already started the process. You did the north side of the Sebastian Highlands. You've already allocated over $5 million to rebuild the canal walls that's part of the drainage system. How can you sit up there and feel comfortable with yourself that it was okay to do one side of 512, and not proceed with the other side of 512? It's mind-boggling. Why be reactive? Why not be proactive? Why not, we have a gentleman whose name is Senator Negron, he's the president of the Senate. Why aren't we figuring out ways to get money through the legislature, and share the expense of doing phases, and do this right, and get it behind us? Why should we put our heads in the sand and wait for liability, and wait for a class-action lawsuit to come hit the city? There are people that pay taxes in this community, that are entitled to have their canal walls fixed, just like the opposite side on 512. How do you justify that? How do you live with yourself? We have a gentleman who came here, made a beautiful presentation, explaining how a 50-year and 100-year storm is going to hit us eventually, and we're going to be liable, because we already started a project that we have not finished. We took that obligation on when General Development went bankrupt, and gave us all that property in lieu of maintaining those canals, which they developed from day one. We have a moral obligation to look out for the taxpayers of this community, and not put our heads in the sand, and take an opportunity of a lifetime by contacting State Representative Mrs. Mayfield, let her get with the legislative delegation, which we should have been doing from day one, and preparing this in three to four phases. Nobody's asking you to put out $20, $30 million immediately, but we should have a plan. We should not be reactive. That's asking for trouble. And then, we're going to get stuck with the litigation bills and the damages, because we decided that we're not going to fix these other properties that we're obligated to do. Please, Mr. Mayor, let's have a workshop on this. Let's pull all the right people together. The legislation's not over. We could possibly rush things through and ask for them, they're setting money aside right now for Lake Okachobee, because they have problems up there in his district with the allergy bloom, okay? They're setting money aside with the organization that meets here periodically, the cities that are looking at spending the federal money, which is probably going to get cut now, but we need to look at this in the big picture. We can't just say we're going to do one at a time, we're going to fix them as needed, and put the responsibility on the homeowner. Those days are gone. Remember, go back to your minutes, go back to your meetings, you spent over $5 million. You fixed one side of the Highlands, you must do the other side, and we need to start now, while we have the people in place, we really do. And we can save millions of dollars if we have an approach, and a plan, and a strategy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the seawalls? Any further council discussion? So we got the motion for the bury and sod, put in the plan with the engineer plan?
Yes.
Right? That's the motion.
And do the plan, go and submit it to get the approvals, and I certainly would hope, I do agree with one thing, that the gentleman just made a very nice, he brought some very valid points. And if we look at things the way we have to, there's a tactical approach and a strategic approach. Right now, we're in the tactical mode. If strategically, it becomes appropriate to think what we might do in the long term on it, fine, and it may be something, conversations, so you can be carried off with St. John's. But right now, we're in the tactical mode, and I think we have to do this.
Right. What was the number to bury, to slope of the whole canal? Was it 14 million that I'm thinking, to 20?
Yeah, big money.
How much?
14 million.
14 million?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, a lot of money.
All right. I'll get a motion in a second on that. Roll call.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And we're just going to make a motion, and then we have to put the second thing, if it's on private property.
I actually think that's been taken care of, and I do agree with you, the other thing the attorney just said is, I don't think the city can pay for stuff on private property like that, so, I think it's a moot point, don't you?
Do you need one? Do you want a motion on the other?
I would think that we should have a motion. Yes, ma'am, you're talking about the payment.
On city property or not city property?
Yes.
Do you want it to feel comfortable?
Yes.
Yes, I think we should.
So I make the motion before that?
I'm not going to make that motion.
Well, I made that motion.
Oh, you're making that.
Then I'll second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
No.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchin.
Yes.
And Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The only thing I can think about is, you know, nothing changed, Frank, in a year on a couple of those properties. And I would say the ones that are on private property, if you think you have this problem, and you are not taking any mitigation on your own, and then it falls in, and then you want to come after the city for this problem, do you have any, an opinion on that, Mr. Ginsburg?
Yes, and it actually goes further back than that. From what we heard in prior discussions, the building of improvements puts pressure, additional pressure on the wall. The planting of certain landscaping also puts pressure on the wall. I mean, there are things that property owners do with their own property that adds to the original wall that was there, or the problems with the original wall that was there. So, in addition to the general idea of the city going on private property, making improvements on private property at the expense of the public, in addition to that, you've got actions by private property owners that are making things worse.
Because the properties that I toured, I could just see the water spouts were headed the same way, and eroding that property right down around the wall, as well as the sprinkler systems were right down around there.
Sprinkler systems is another.
Doing the same thing, and it's all on their property.
And we don't, and we don't have control over how their sprinkler systems work and are repaired, and so. are repaired and so forth.
All right. Thank you. All right, this time I open up to public input. Anyone from the public wish to speak on anything not already on the agenda? All right. Brings us up to new business, first reading ordinance, number O-17-02, alcoholic beverages in Riverview Park. Mr. Ginsburg.
Yes, sir. 14A is first reading of an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, relating to public park rules and regulations, limiting the use of alcohol to city-sponsored events, amending code section 74-4A7, providing for conflicts, providing severability, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
I move to approve ordinance O-17-02.
Second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Yes.
Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, brings up item 14B, award the police evidence building construction contract. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. This is an item that admittedly is a little bit behind schedule with us because we had permitting problems relating to our stormwater plan here in the City Hall campus. The decision was made by a selection committee, put the new police evidence building in back of the police department, and we went forward with engineering and architecture, put the, a public bid was published and closed on 6 April. Low bid was $345,281.46. There is a deficit there of around $79,000, which I am requesting that we fund from DST to fully fund this project, and we are recommending approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move staff recommendation and authorize the additional funding of $79,000.746.
Second. All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion?
Yeah, just one question. The $345 for the total cost, the contingency is above that, so that moves that up to about $370, potentially with the contingency?
Correct. Yes, I think we did a contingency of $35,000.
That is correct. For a change, potential change orders, we always want to have contingency just in case.
Okay, all right. Is there a limit to a change order approval process? I have never looked at that, so I don't know.
Is there? 15, that's correct. Frank's right.
Any change orders can exceed 15% of the actual construction cost or it goes back to city council.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Cumulative change orders.
Yeah, on change orders, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Yes.
Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, brings up the items, 14C, award the cemetery columbarium construction contract. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. We're approaching 50% occupancy of the one columbarium that we have at the cemetery. It's been a project we've tried to get kick-started. The first time we put this out for bid, I think it was about a year ago, came in severely overbid. We did some things that reduced our exposure there and put it out for rebid just a month or two ago. It closed, and the low bid was $99,300, and we're recommending approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on the cemetery columbarium project? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Yes.
Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings up the city attorney matters. Mr. Ginsburg.
None tonight. I thank you, except to thank each of the commissioners for taking my recent phone calls. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin.
One thing, sir. There is a new group who we are hosting in the old council chambers. The name of that group is Adult Children of Alcoholics, and I want to acknowledge them for contributing $100 to the city of Sebastian in consideration of their use of the old council chambers. Thank you very much, and that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Williams.
Nothing tonight.
All right. Ms. Kitchen.
I was driving down Southeast Street, and I'm pleased to say that you managed to stretch that asphalt all the way to Fleming. Thank you very much for that. And it looks very nice. Are you going to do any other striping besides the stop bars?
We're talking about East Street?
Southeast. Or on any of the streets that we just recently paved?
The streets that we've striped so far is Barber Street and Bocell, and the rest of the streets did not have any striping beyond stop bars, and we're going to keep them that way.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope. I'm done.
There was no skimming on that asphalt, right? It was all a-
Actually, I think you should give it to the attorney soon.
All right. Well, all I have is, again, you know, as Ms. Coy mentioned earlier, Earth Day, your staff did a tremendous job out there putting everything up, and of course, shout out, you know, we have the Castle Memory Field that's flying over there in Riverview Park, and it's 101 flags representing the 101 kids who died from abuse and neglect last year. And again, I want to commend your staff because you had Rob and Bub and Marco that were out there, and they helped me set up the field. And then again, the next day, they set up the speakers and everything, and the park just looked fabulous. So you run an incredible crew, Joe, and I'm very proud of everybody who works in the city.
I'm proud of them too, sir, and I'll pass the word. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Coy.
Just to follow up on the, I'm going to mention Earth Day again, that marks the one year that we have been requiring people not to drive inside on trees, and it's working better and better and better. Each iteration that we do this, it's working, and it is, in fact, saving a lot of our trees. But we do need, counsel, as I looked around down there, it's beautiful and our park is gorgeous, we really need to consider planting some backup stuff down there because the oak trees don't last forever. We have to have something behind them because when they go, it's going to be a big field, and that defeats the purpose. So I really think maybe Parks and Rec needs to consider, what is going to be the plan? How do we back up these trees? How do we plant? But kudos to everybody who's trying to make those beautiful carts that the city invested in, trying to make them work. It's been one year, so we've made one complete cycle. It's only going to get better. Thank you.